Kirk County Commissioners Court is now in session for its regular Commissioners Court meeting. First thing I want to do is remind everyone, don't need to turn your cell phones off. This is an exception to the general rule. But do put them where they vibrate or just give you a little buzz so they don't ring. We have a telephone up here at the bench for the people that are calling in. We have that number out there, it's 830-792-6161 if anyone wants to call in. We have it here to answer. Next item on the agenda, our agenda today is we'll start with the prayer and the pledge. And this will be done by Mr. Letts.
Judge Letts, a prayer please. Heavenly Father, I thank you for being part of our life. I ask that you really help everyone from these time difficult times, especially our many of our kids that are really having to struggle with not going to school but having online classes and a lot of activities disrupted for them and probably hitting them a little bit harder than everybody else. I would ask, really watch after our first responders, people at hospitals, we're all there doing. Heavenly Lord, let's ask that you help the home and family out of comfort for the loss they had over this weekend. I say things in Christ's name.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. Now we're live. This is the opportunity for public input. If there's anyone who would like to address the court, this is your opportunity to do so. We ask that you limit it to three minutes. And bear in mind, whatever you tell us, we can't respond because this is just input, not output. So if there's anyone that would like to address the court, this is your opportunity. There being no one, let's move on to Commissioners' comments.
Judge, I've got a couple, or one pertaining to the petition to be signed for allowing the issue to be put on the November ballot for alcohol beverage sale in precinct two. Couple of things that have happened which are good. The problem is getting 2,000 signatures in this COVID-19 virus situation is not going to be possible going door to door. So there's a petition been filed for declaratory judgment in 216th District Court for that, for electronic signatures to be allowed. And we will see if that gets through, but that petition has been filed. And the other thing is Representative Andrew Murer sent a letter to the governor asking him to include waiving the applicable statute so individuals can electronically sign petitions for that same cause. So two good things going there, so we'll see how that comes out. If that's the case, then we will probably be able to get it done. If not, if you have to go door to door, get signatures in person, it's probably not going to happen, so.
Very good. Any other Commissioners' comments?
It's just, it's good to see some people getting back to work that were without for a while. I noticed the restaurants, there's still a lot of takeout and what have you. But we are getting a sprinkling of a few more people inside and what have you. And that's really good for these small business owners here in town, so it's good to see.
I did mention in the prayer, one of the things, hopefully this happens this week, we get some rain.
Yeah, I saw that.
We have a chance, I think, tonight and then a little bit better chance later this weekend. And it is getting pretty dry, especially for this time of the year, which is surprising since we had just a good start. And the other thing is just, as I mentioned, did mention in the prayer, David Homan passed away unexpectedly in comfort. You know, Homan Welding, in addition to that, he's kind of a comfort icon, but really volunteered for all kinds of events all the time. And he'll be missed.
Very good. Any other comments? Let's go on to item 1.1 on the agenda, which is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the update, facility use, and other matters related to COVID-19. Our Emergency Management Coordinator, Doug Thomas.
More Judge, more Commissioners. So for the situational report for this week, May 4th through May the 11th, the Kirk County, City of Kerrville, City of Ingram Emergency Operations Center is still activated. We're still operating remotely and we are fully staffed. The call center continues to be open as well for folks wanting to look for information about school closings or buildings closed, whatever. Businesses that are actually closed or those that have opened up. Part of the current situation, we received four COVID positive 19 results last week. Two were from the Texas Military Forces testing on May the 2nd at the CROC Center. The other two were from Peterson Regional Medical Center testing. All those patients are at home quarantining and self-monitoring. None have been hospitalized. On May the 8th, Governor Abbott announced that the Texas Division of Emergency Management has applied for FEMA Category B, which is emergency protective measures, assistance funding for food banks. If approved, it'll provide $70 million for Texas food banks. May 8th, 2020, cosmetology salons, hair salons, barber shops, I know everybody's glad the barber shops are open. Nail salons and some other establishments where licensed cosmetologists or barbers practice may open. They must ensure six feet of social distancing between operating stations and tanning salons may also open. On May the 6th, Governor Abbott and the One Star Foundation announced the Texas COVID Relief Fund, which provides critical funding and resources to organizations across the state, working on the ground to support economic recovery for the local communities. These funds will be distributed through grants focused on the areas of community and economic development, healthcare, and education. Funds will also be used to support local priorities and organizations serving the unmet needs of vulnerable populations. And we all know April 27th, Governor announced the first phase of the plan to open the state of Texas, minimizing the spread of COVID-19. Under Phase 1, certain activities and are allowed to open with limited occupancy. And the DSHS released some minimum standard health protocols for that. There's also, and I think Judge has it there in front of him, there are guidelines for counties that had less than, or five or less positive cases to remain at the 50% rule for these facilities. There are consequences for going back to 25%, and I think Judge, if you'll read those out.
This is an email that we received this morning. It's something that the Governor had in his initial order. But people need to know that just because we were given the opportunity to open up to 50% capacity, we can be required to go back. And there's a specific formula that the Governor's put together, which basically is three positive cases per thousand population, which for Kirk County would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 cases. But there's also a provision that for a five-day testing or tracking positivity period, may not exceed 12%. So that if we have a drastic spike in positive cases and it's computed out to be 12% or more, we can be closed back down also.
12% of what?
The test during a five-day period. And then there is a 15% surge capacity that relates to the hospital's capacity. If we fill up the hospital and we don't have a 15% capacity, we can be required to go from 50% capacity back down to 25%. And I just wanted to make sure that the people know that because everybody's acting like it's business as usual and it's not. It's better, but it's not as usual, so I asked up to bring that up, so thank you.
And part of, and one of the things I wanted to take a look at is over the last week or so, since even though we did have the four positives for this past week, we're still at, if you take a look at the number of tests we've done and the positive rate that we have, we're still less than 2%. We're like 1.58%, so we're well below that 12%. If we do push that 12%, then it'll be, or we hit 12%, then for the next five testing weeks, if we hit 12% again, then we're subject to going back to the 25%.
How many did they test at the military last Friday?
This past Friday was 117 tests.
I understand that week before that was 117.
Yeah. 224.
I'll skip the April 17th stuff. We've pretty much talked about that over the past couple of weeks. But COVID-19 continues to spread. Texas figures as of this morning were 37,860. In the United States, we had 1.3 million, the world 4.2 million. Total deaths for Texas is 1,088. USA 78,000. Total recovered 21,000, and the state of Texas 210,000 in the United States. For Texas, the testing continues. They've done nearly 490,000 tests. Private labs have done 473,000, public labs 15,000. The numbers for Kirk County and the surrounding counties, Kendall County is at 19, Medina is at 31 with two fatalities, Lano three, Blanco six, Burnett jumped from 19 to 26. Kirk County is at nine, and Gillespie four. Bandera, and new on that list is Kimball County, they have one case. The Texas counties, the total of 219 of the Texas counties have had positive COVID-19 cases. Number continues to go up. The DSHS Region 8 numbers, in which Kirk County is part of, active 1,063. Total recovered, again, that's another number that I want to continue to concentrate on, is 1,289. And the deaths have been 79. Our operational priorities, same as they've always been the last several weeks, public safety is still top priority. We're going to continue to provide timely and accurate information to the public concerning the spread of the virus and ways to avoid becoming infected. Continue to work with the City of Kerrville Emergency Management, Kerrville EMS, Peterson Regional Infection Control to develop tactics for testing, isolation, and treatment of infected persons. PPE hasn't been coming in the last couple of weeks, I've ordered some more. It's just, it's sitting in the queue with the State Operations Center, so we're just waiting to find out what's going to happen with that. Mobile testing at the Hill Country Youth Event Center ended on May the 1st. The numbers that you have there for Peterson Regional are incorrect. I didn't receive the number until I had already put this together and started out the door this morning. But they did do 110 tests through Peterson and Urgent Care last week. And two of those are part of our positive count from the week before. Friday, May 8th, mobile testing was conducted by Texas Military Forces at the CROC Center from 5, I'm sorry, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, 117 tests were conducted. We sent out a code red on Wednesday with the information on the mobile testing. And all those results are still pending, I haven't heard anything at this time.
Is that more testing planned for CROC Center?
I was about to just bring that up. Yes, sir, we have, there's been a request to ask if we were interested in a third round of COVID testing. And we are interested, we have put our name in the queue, in the pot, to get a third round of military forces to come out and test. When I find out what that particular date is and the location, I'll make sure that y'all are aware of it. Let's see, public education and outreach, Peterson Regional's line for talking to a nurse is still open. That's 896-4200, extension one. The Kirk County EOC is still established, manned with a number of volunteers that can respond to FAQs. That number is, again, 896-4200. For the nurse, 258-1111 is the call center number. There it's located inside the Emergency Operations Center, and it is manned at all the time, from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. Kirk County and City of Kerrville websites continue to be updated with links for Peterson Regional, Centers for Disease Control, and the Department of State Health Services. And we've also established a list of recovered resources for citizens to, or handling their grand utilities, those types of assistance. Any questions on anything this morning? Y'all are easy today.
Waiting for the results of.
Waiting for the results from last week, yes, sir. That's pretty much it.
Well, and one thing I would build off of with your report, Doug, is when the Governor opened up Texas effective May 1, he told us that he was going to go for the first two-week period. And based what he did after that on the data and the doctor's advice. And so we are, this week we will complete that second week. And we'll see what the data looks like.
Yeah, I believe on May the 18th, gyms and other facilities are going to be opened up or can open up with certain restrictions. So, and all those, all that information contained on DSH's and CDC's website.
I know that the Georgia Governor opened up pretty aggressively compared to everybody else, and their results are very good. So hopefully we'll stay on track and get more and more people back to work.
I think the more we open up, it's going to be incumbent upon folks to still continue to follow the advice of Department of State Health Services, social distancing, washing your hands, using hand sanitizer when washing your hands is not available, and those such things. It's going to be extremely important. We don't want to see a spike here.
Right.
I think an interesting statistic came out last week was that 80% of the counties in the United States have five or less cases. That's big. 80% have or less.
I hadn't heard that.
And only 11% have 16 or more. So 16 was kind of 16 to 1,000, whatever. So very interesting statistic.
And you take a look at the Department of State Health Services website where they have the interactive map that'll show you, all those numbers that we talked about earlier that were along the I-35 corridor east are gradually creeping west. So we've gone from 219 to 254 counties in Texas now have COVID positive cases, but it's creeping west, so.
Kind of like faring.
Yes, sir.
One other thing that the public probably should know is we've been operating under the Governor's executive orders. But the courthouse for the criminal justice system and even civil justice system, we have to answer to the Texas Supreme Court. And the Texas Supreme Court administers their orders through the Office of Court Administration, the OCA. And this past week, we received a very detailed instruction from OCA about how we open our courts back up for jury trials and in-person hearings. And it's going to be extremely rigorous, extremely rigorous. We're going to have to take the temperature of everybody coming into the courthouse. We're going to have to, they're going to have to ask the questions about each one of the symptoms. We're going to have to have, everyone's going to have to wear a mask. This is not from the Governor, this is from the Texas Supreme Court. And I was talking with Judge Emerson about it. We all had to prepare a plan. I had to come up with an operating plan of how we're going to operate the county court on my juvenile, probate, and mental health documents. And in talking with Judge Emerson, I can tell you that this is going to be a very expensive and a very rigorous undertaking to open this courthouse back up, handle the justice system.
Yeah.
And the offices, and just saying this to the elected officials in your offices, the courthouse is not going to be able to operate on these reduced hours. We're going to have to open up eight to five, these offices, to be able to handle things. And to be able to maintain the social distancing. We're even having problems now here at the courthouse maintaining social distancing for the tax office and the clerk's office. So we've done good. I'm proud of everybody, proud of what we've done. We don't have any COVID in the jail, correct? We don't have it in our nursing homes, we haven't been infected like that. But this is far from over. We have a long way to go before we're going to sleep on this one. Thank you, Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Is it testing everyone that comes to the courthouse or testing everyone that's going up into the courts?
Sheriff's got it back there. Is everyone coming to the courthouse?
The plan, we'll see what all the judges have, come up with a plan that has to be submitted and approved by the OCA. But the template they sent out for that, which all the judges have, is, of course, OCA, you know, normally can only control courtrooms and the court area, right? And that's fine in buildings where that's all that's in there. But in these older courthouses like ours, where the courts are in the same building with your tax office and your clerk's office, then it's a little bit more hard because part of their template says no more than two people in elevators. Anybody coming into any waiting area, any area that's general public area will have to be given a mask by us, okay? And will have to have their temperature checked and the questions answered. Now, it's not testing, but it is a kind of screening on what they're doing. And so it's going to be interesting on that OCA deal, and I'm sure the county attorney got a copy of it too. It says that they need to have those plans done by June 1st. Well, I've heard that's kind of a soft date, but, because it's going to take some of them working a little bit more.
I subided mine.
Yeah, but then yours and the district courts has to all be put together in one unified plan, come up for this courthouse. But it's going to be extremely hard because the only way that I can do it with the manpower we have is pay off-duty officers overtime to be able to do it. And then you're talking at least 40 hours of overtime a week for those officers coming in because they're going to have to ask those questions. And we're going to, and I'll say this now, we've got to get these other offices. OCA is going to control our courts. But we have to get these other offices, like the tax office, clerk's office, district clerk, county clerk, JPs, all of those offices open eight to five, Monday through Friday. It's, when they have limited hours, okay, because they're doing behind-the-scenes stuff, it's making people stack up out here in the hallway and I can't keep the social distancing. They need to do their job inside their office area and abiding by the social distancing, but don't make them stack up out here in the hallway. So, but there's going to be, and unfortunately, what I'm seeing is this is going to be a long time deal. It's not going to be something that's just going to last a month or two. I think we're looking through, at least through this year, if not even through part of next year. Because right now, until they can get these plans in, they're saying no jury trials. And that makes everybody stack up in the jails. And that makes, you know, it's just, it's a snowball going downhill that I think has gotten out of control, is my opinion. But we're going to have to abide by it, we don't have much choice. And it's going to cost us a lot to do it.
So Rusty, your screening and stuff, would that take place outside before people get in the building?
It'd have to be at an entrance that we have to set up where it's going to be the, you know, I had.
That's the best.
Until the judges come up with a plan, and that's who, unfortunate, you know, the ones that have to enforce this plan are not part of the planning, okay? It's the judges that have to come up with this plan, and once they come up with it, then we'll have to figure a way to enforce it.
Unfunded mandate.
More than.
Attorney, how is it that they, that this, it's the O.
The Office of Court Administration?
Office of Court Administration, OCA.
The Supreme Court, it's also.
Part of that. So they expand their jurisdiction, pass their courtroom to the courthouse. How and based on what?
The Supreme Court has authority over.
All the courts?
Yes.
I get that. And all the judges. These offices are not all court building.
What Rusty was, I don't know if you can hear me, what Rusty was saying is that our courthouse is different because we have other offices that are.
I heard that, but that doesn't specifically address how, in this room, for example, is Commissioners' Court. But across the hall is the Auditor's Office, and across the hall over there is the JP's Office. So how is it that they expand their jurisdiction, pass their courtroom to the entire courthouse?
Let me explain. Judge Abels is the administrative judge for a region, judicial region here, Administrative District in Texas. And he goes all the way to El Paso. He's already been out there fighting these battles with the judges in El Paso. He is the one, he is the enforcer for the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court has the jurisdiction over all the judges, me included. And if we don't do what the Supreme Court orders us to do, we can be brought up before the Commission for Judicial Conduct. And we can be fined, we can be sanctioned, we can be imprisoned for short periods of time. They can do all kinds of things to us. There's been no enforcement power in the Governor's orders. He's put in there a $1,000 fine or up to 180 days in jail, and not one of them have been enforced. The Supreme Court is not as lax as that. And the Office of Court Administration is their enforcement arm. That's the arm that they use to administer their orders to the various courts. And so when the OCA sends us an order, we have to comply with it. The problem with this courthouse is the OCA has no jurisdiction, the Texas Supreme Court has no jurisdiction over the clerk's office, right? But they have jurisdiction over, the way this order is worded, the building in which the courts are situated. And in a lot of the cities, they have special buildings for the courts. And so those buildings are going to have to comply with all these rules. But in rural counties, we have our courts in the same courthouse that we have the other offices. And so when they say building, we have to follow their order.
If I can, I can read just a little part of what they put out, Commissioner. It says, "Each local administrative district judge must attempt to confer with all judges of all courts with courtrooms in county buildings, including district judges, county court of law judges, county judges, justices, peace, associate judges, magistrates, and chief justices of Court of Criminal Appeals." And then when you get into it, it says, "Courts should consider how to ensure distancing in public common areas, galleries of courtroom, wells of courtroom, hallways, elevators, restrooms, or other locations where the public might gather. Special attention should be given to scheduling in buildings with multiple courtrooms as common areas such as waiting areas, halls, and elevators become crowded in such a way that it's impossible to maintain appropriate social distancing. Courts should consider having hand sanitizer dispensers available at various locations around the courthouse, including at the entry and exits from the building and courtrooms. Courts should ensure that tissues are available for public use in courtrooms and other public areas. Courts should post readily visible signage reminding individuals of best hygiene protocols. Individuals feeling feverish or with measured temperatures equal to or greater than 100 degrees or with new or worsening signs or symptoms of COVID-19, such as cough, shortness of breath, or difficulty breathing, chills, repeated shaking, with chills, muscle pains, headaches, sore throat, loss of taste or smell, diarrhea, or having known close contact with a person who has confirmed COVID-19, must not be presented entry."
That's must on that last part, it was a lot of shoulds prior to that and no shalls.
Okay, but the deal.
Not one shall, but a should and a must if you exhibit symptoms or if you've been exposed to somebody that exhibited symptoms or is confirmed as a COVID case. That does not mean that, as far as my understanding, what you just read, unless there's more to it, that doesn't mean the whole courthouse, that means the courtroom.
Oh, they talk, I'm picking out six pages.
It says should, it doesn't say shall. And so I think you guys are just with the conclusions.
Wait, wait just a minute, Harley. Rest of this, face coverings. Face coverings, cloth face coverings at a minimum should be required, should be required, of individuals while in the courthouse. Should an individual be in a courthouse for lengthy periods of time, non-medical-grade face masks should be considered if they are available. Now, I agree with you, a lot of these are shoulds, but the thing is, you and I don't get to choose. This plan has to be developed and actually presented to the regional administrative judge by the local administrative judge, okay? The local administrative judge has to get all the judges in the courthouse to agree and develop a plan for their courts that are in this courthouse with these common areas. Then that administrator, local administrative judge, and the county attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, must submit that to the regional administrative judge, who then must submit it to the OCA Office of Court Administration for final approval. And once it's approved, that's the plan that has to be followed in the courthouse.
Well, there's one more step, there's one more step. Just to make sure the public understands this. I prepared and drafted an operating plan. I submitted it to Judge Emerson, who is our local administrative judge, who will then work with us to come up with a courthouse plan. That courthouse plan will then be presented to the regional administrative judge, which is Judge Abels, who's also in this courthouse. And he's responsible for then taking that recommendation, and it goes through the OCA to the Texas Supreme Court. The Texas Supreme Court then enters orders. And when that court enters an order, we are duty-bound to follow their orders. And if we don't, they will discipline us. And so it goes up, and then it trickles back down. What it's going to look like, I can't. What it's going to look like, I can't, I can't promise you that, Mr. Blue.
Yeah, I think the issue, and I agree with Mr. Blue on this, they have, the OCA has no authority over our environmental health department.
That's right.
So they can't tell us what to do down there, period. And they can't, they have no authority over-
Our community resources, right.
They do for you, but they don't for the other four of us.
Right.
So they cannot tell us how to operate our offices. The governor can, but OCA cannot. And that's the issue.
And that's where the problem is, because they can with the county judge in this room, because this is the county courtroom, okay? And they can with county court at law judge in her courtroom. Now, when they start talking about elevators and common areas and waiting areas, waiting area for the county court at law courtroom is this hallway.
Or upstairs is the common area.
Well, we can change that. All we have to do is, Commissioner's Court can close this courtroom, close that courtroom, and they'll have to go upstairs. All courts are upstairs. Then that's where it is.
And it also affects your JP courtrooms.
All of them.
And your juvenile papers.
We can close all courtrooms in this courthouse itself upstairs, but then schedule. I'm going to say, I think we have that authority.
Right. Well, we're going to have to get Judge Emerson and Judge Emerson to explain this.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, Jonathan.
I know.
All I'm saying, because I don't like, I have the same belief that it's hard for me to believe OCA can control what goes on in this hallway, all right? But, which, once it's over, it's going to be what all your judges control. And that's what's going to be hard. Because they're the ones that have to-
It's a bit of a, it's a principle thing-
Sure.
On this thing, and, you know, if they can, if the OCA has authority to do that, well, then they can go to the courthouse square. Then they can go to the city of Curville.
Yeah, where does it-
Where do you stop it? See, you might as well stop it here. And I think that we can designate the courtrooms as a Commissioner's Court, they could be open, and where those courts are-
I agree with him.
Let OCA deal with it.
Well, I suggest y'all get very involved with your district judges and all your judges around, because that's what's going to decide it, okay?
We need the most, least restrictive plan we can get.
There you go.
I agree.
And this is going to cost the taxpayers money, and it's coming from above our heads, so there's not much choice, and we've already incurred extra expenses. Your office has, a lot of other offices have, probably yours has been the one.
Anticipating this, what Doug told y'all about waiting for, uh, the next round of masks and that to come in, we've already ordered like 5,000 that we're hoping we can get.
On that, does it say you have to give, provide the masks?
Yeah.
If they don't have one.
If they don't have one, you have to provide.
Okay, if they don't have one.
Which means you have to buy some to be prepared for that in the event that this proceeds as.
Right. Well, people can all put them in their pocket and come in and-
I think one thing, and I've noticed just with the tax office, one thing you'll notice is the, it's unreal, the number of people daily that go in and out of this courthouse.
It makes it worse when everybody starts stacking up. It's worse now than it would have been otherwise.
Yep.
Well, for what it's worth, the shockwaves went through the judges' community last week. We weren't happy about this. Shockwaves are now hitting you, and they're going to hit the public too. I don't, I don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but we've got, uh, more coming, just saying.
But as Don Harris said, no more restrictive than necessary.
Maybe on Monday, Judge Emerson can come down, this was-
That would be great.
Or maybe Abels.
Or Judge Abels.
Sure.
Are they here?
Because I can tell you one thing that I'm interested in doing, and I talked to Judge Emerson about this, is I don't want to be a problem for Judge Abels. If he's ordered to do something, uh, I want to comply with his orders as possible, uh, because it just makes it tough on everybody, uh, if we don't. He's had problems out in El Paso already, I know.
Well, we figure how to, how to follow OCA and his rules to keep the courthouse open.
He'll tell us.
A clear interpretation will lead us to clear, uh, measure of whatever we have to do. Execution, I guess is a good word.
But it's out on the table now, we know what's coming. Let's go to the next item on the agenda, which we do weekly now, uh, and that is 1.2. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the local state of disaster due to public health and economic emergency proclamation that I signed on March the 24th and extended until terminated by order of the Kerr County Commissioners' Court on March 30. And what this is, is we have declared a state of disaster based on the health and the economic disasters that we're experiencing, and we have to renew it, uh, every week. We put an order in place that said we would, we, it will continue every week unless it's terminated. So this is the opportunity for anyone that wants to terminate that order, uh, to discuss it and put it to a vote.
See, no reason to terminate it.
Continue. I don't either. I don't like it, but I don't see how we stop it at this point.
Well, terminating it doesn't do anything anyway.
Exactly.
And leaving it on doesn't do anything.
That's right. It is what it is right now. Yeah. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, is 1.3. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve Steven Smirbeck as a new member of the Kerr, Kerrville, Kerr County Joint Airport Board. And we've got Mark Moser, the president of the board, here.
Hi, thank you, Your Honor. Commissioners, Mark Moser, vice president of the Kerr-
Oh, Vice President, I'm sorry.
Kerr County Airport Board.
Bill, Bill Wood's president.
Yeah, for two more weeks.
Right.
He's done a great job.
I'm putting the cart before the horse already.
He's done a great job, he's going to miss out on the big party we planned for him because of the social discipline. Um, as you know, you've seen some of the, uh, things you've approved lately on term limits, and this started about five, six, seven years ago, I think Tom was involved in it. We, there's so much to understand with the airport that we wanted the best continuity we can get. And with five members, the original plan they had, they didn't, they extrapolated long enough to see we're going to be losing more than one member a year, and that was our goal, to never lose more than one member a year of the five. So the current structure we have, that's what's happening, we will lose one member a year. And, uh, we'll just have to go with that, that's the best-case situation for the lowest, uh, stress on continuity. And this year, we were really blessed, we had some fantastic, uh, applicants, the best I've ever seen. And so, it made it difficult for us, but, uh, we did have to make a decision, and we did, and we landed with Steven Smirbeck. And Steven's a Kerrville native, he's a father with three grown, accomplished, uh, children, and he owns a local business, which I'm sure you all are familiar with, Garrett Insurance, it's on its fifth, fifth generation right now. So I'm pretty impressed with it, he does have other locations, but their home office is here in Kerrville. He's an activist, a pilot aircraft owner, he's been very active at the airport, and he's, he's made it his own, on his own initiative, be, be as current as he can without being a board member on our activities we have going on, and that's going to help a lot with the transition. I've known Steven now for a few years, and I find him highly intelligent, extremely organized. I, I, my wife is smarter than I'll ever be, comments that she's never seen anybody who has so many responsibilities and does them all correctly, doesn't do anything halfway. So that was one of, one of the many, um, assets that I wanted on the board, and Steve definitely, um, fills that void. He's an experienced leader and a team player, and he's an outstanding communicator, he's just overall a great guy, and we're really fortunate to have him on the board. Have any questions for Steven? He's available.
So Steven, uh, how long have you been flying?
About 10 years.
About 10 years.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What do you see is, uh, the challenges at the airport, facing Kerr County, Kerrville, the airport board?
Yes, sir. When I was interviewed, I told them I felt like pretty much a virgin, that they could do with me whatever they want since I had been there, but really had not been there and seen what they were doing in there. So I told them, you guys get to mold me into what you guys want me to be. I've always loved the airport, I fly in and out of there monthly, uh, it's a great airport, um, I've been to a lot of other airports, so I'm impressed with it, we'd like to just keep it the way it is, but obviously, uh, see it grow and get better.
You know, just, just for the public, and Jonathan's been involved in the airport longer than, than I have. When I was on the airport board, he was the liaison, and when city and county were running the airport, uh, it didn't run very well at all. So when the airport board, given the authority to operate the airport, with the restriction of being, having their budget approved, the members approved, I think it's, it's just operated extremely, extremely well. Going from $400,000 a year from city, county, down to zero now for operation budget. But it just exemplifies the fact that if you let an organization govern themselves, like the airport board does, and in selecting members of what skills they need, I think it's, it's really good, strong testimony to that, as opposed to being told from the top down how to do it, so.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Okay, Tom, I think the Kerrville Board has done a really good job on looking at their membership and selecting people that, that work and bring kind of different friends of mine through the board. I'm glad to have a, a board member that's a longtime Kerrville resident, I think it's important. Uh, I think it's also important to have a, a lot of the other, uh, other members bring different, uh, expertise. And I think that really, they've done a really good job on kind of creating a group that, uh, works, the sums are better than the whole. So, uh, good, I'll make a motion to approve Steven Smirbeck.
Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Lett, seconded by Mr. Moser, to approve the appointment of Steven Smirbeck to the Kerrville Kerr County Airport Board. Any discussion?
I just want to say that I've known Steven for a number of years, and when this guy sets his mind to do something, he does it. And, uh, I couldn't take a better choice, and I'm proud of him.
Sounds good, it's great that you have a large pool to choose from and get the best, that's great.
Well, my, my comment is, I've known Steven's family for almost three, three decades now, uh, and this is fine family, and Steven's a fine young man. I've known him, I remember back when his wife was pregnant with their first child, we go way back.
Yes, sir.
We couldn't have, be in better hands, frankly.
Thank you.
So, we'll take a vote, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you for serving Steven.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. The next item on the agenda, I placed on the agenda at the request of Truett Earhart. It's 1.4. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on an offer to sanitize, sanitize the first floor of the courthouse free of charge using Evericide technology, uh, which is an ozone gas that kills virus. Is Mr. Earhart out here?
No, sir.
Y'all have probably seen Mr. Earhart around the courthouse, he's, he's regularly here, and he's come up with the technology, well, actually, he's come up with it, he has, uh, reacquainted everyone with technology that kills the virus. And it's ozone, uh, gas, uh, they would, uh, come in and, uh, kind of fog the courthouse, kind of area by area, let it sit for about an hour, uh, and then, uh, that, and that kills the virus.
It's after-hours operation.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And he's, he's talked to me, uh, I know he's talked to Commissioner Moser, I have his box, uh, he's been very, been very diligent about this, and he's, uh, offered to help us, uh, keep the courthouse, uh, free of the virus by doing this. And so, I put it on the agenda to see what, what the court thought.
It's at no cost.
No charge.
What is there, my only question is, is there a downside to this, and, you know, it's, I don't know, I don't know of any downside, but it's, if there's no cost and there's no downside, fine.
Well, this says the first floor, what are we going to do upstairs? Is it something we need to-
We start a little bit-
Going to be expected to take to do the-
I just, I put on the agenda what he told me.
Okay, so.
My only question is, is, until I would know more about, he talked to me also about it, is the active backwatering and the antiviral.
Right.
It is a gas that could be dangerous, and how are we, what are the downsides to it? Does it stick around, what's it going to take to delay, what's it going to take to get the courthouse back open, once you use, I don't know any of the precautions from it that we had in purpose, so.
Well, I got a better question, what's the upside to it? How would you know if we got any bang for, even if it's free, how do you know if anything happened? So.
Don't know.
I hate, I hate to turn you down, somebody wants to do a good deed, but I don't see the point. Nobody's going to know if it worked. I can come in here with my magic wand tonight and wave it around and tell you, got rid of the coronavirus.
Would you get the other two floors far as then?
What?
Would you get the other two floors far as then?
I'd do that too.
Then why don't we pass, pass it at this time, and, uh, until we know more information?
Like to hear from him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll pass that one, let's go on to 1.5. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action. Well, I tell you what, let's not go to 1.5. It's a quarter of 10, we have a 9:30 item that's timed, let's do that one. Uh, 1.8, skip down to it. Report regarding the Veterans Services Office operations as well as the 2020 Memorial Day plans. Uh, I think we have Jennifer Sanches and Marty Mistrada.
Let me say something before Marty starts and Jennifer starts. Marty is, uh, has notified us that she is going to go to Air Force training June 22nd to September the 27th, I believe. So for three months, Marty is going to be out of pocket, so two parts to this issue is what do we do to accommodate the veterans, uh, because right now, we have one and a half full-time equivalent people. Jennifer is part-time, so with Marty being gone for three months, we have to look and see what we've done. We've talked about it, and I, uh, they have a plan on what to do. And then the other thing is Memorial Day, so, uh, it's going to be an impact to the veterans. I have Marty being out that time, but, uh, that's, that's a challenge. Go ahead.
Well, basically, we're just kind of-
Yeah.
Um, we're just kind of following suit with what Texas Veterans Commission is doing. They're currently not seeing veterans because of COVID, and a lot of our folks have pre-existing conditions, so we're still just kind of, uh, keeping the communication open with our vets. We haven't had any problems so far, the only issue is just trying to get paperwork from some of our older veterans, but we've made accommodations for that. So that's kind of where we're at, and then once we figure out what TDC's going to do, we'll just follow suit as far as physically seeing veterans.
So are you kind of at half, uh, spending half the time you were, or is it going to be okay if Jennifer does this part-time while you're gone? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the understanding was she was still, she's going to be full-time, so she's basically going to do this at full capacity, so she'll be able to take care of that, but we're just kind of trying to balance everything and make sure if, if we are able to see folks during that time, she can just kind of, um, plan accordingly and make sure she makes the schedule further out for folks, but everyone's still going to be taken care of, it just may take a little longer.
Is it going to be necessary for her to be full-time during that?
Yes, sir.
Let me interrupt, right now, uh, she's part-time in an executive session, we'll talk about, uh, personnel.
Well, I'm talking about caseload, I'm not talking about personnel, I'm talking about caseload. So if the caseload has dropped down, you don't need a full-time person or a person and a half until it comes back up again, is what I'm asking.
Well, I don't think the caseload has dropped down, I think-
It's not like it-
Yeah, no, the caseload's still there, I mean, we still get calls all the time, we still have folks we're dealing with, we just can't physically see them. So we've had people drop off paperwork, our emails have been full swing all off to the-
So they're moving along.
Yes, sir, actually, more so.
It's actually increased.
Quite a bit.
Now, there's a stop in the bottlenecks at the point where they can't be seen. You mentioned that, what's that?
Well, we can't see anybody just because of COVID, so we can-
But you said the VA and the-
Um, Texas Veterans Commission, so we can still do things with the veteran, it's just we can't have a face-to-face interview, so we'll have to make phone calls and things of that nature.
Can, can it move on through that process? The veterans, uh, the Veterans Administration?
Everything is still being processed like normal. The only difference is, is that, uh, accredited services like ourselves, because we're credited through Texas Veteran Commission, we're just not seeing them face-to-face. However, we are seeing them through email, uh, through phone calls, so we're still proceeding. So like, if you were a veteran and you said, I want to submit a claim, we're still doing everything like we normally would.
Okay, that's what I wanted to-
to submit a claim, we're still doing everything like we normally would. We're still submitting through the VA. Everything is still processing like it normally would. The only difference is due to COVID, it's just a little bit more of a backlog for our veterans. But everything is still being processed. And we follow up two, three times a week with the system, and we're constantly making communication with the veterans, either through email or phone call, letting them know we see that it's there, we see it's still pending, and we let them know there's any changes. So, it's still there. It's just a little bit of a delay because of the backlog.
That clears that up.
Yes, sir. So, as far as Memorial Day, that was the other thing. So, with the COVID situation, we're still not going to do a public thing for Veterans Day, or, excuse me, Memorial Day. But we decided maybe pending a letter to the community through the newspaper would be a better route, having the judge possibly write a letter, and we can put the names in the newspaper, something along the line. So, we're still acknowledging it, but we're not having to do the public setting. Kind of wanted your feedback on that.
So, I think last year, there was 100-plus people out there. So, that's the concern about having the gathering with that large grouping outside and still maintaining social distancing would be difficult. So, the recommendation here is to not have the ceremony here, but have the judge send, put a letter, a press release, something of that sort.
You don't think we could scatter it out enough to have something?
Yeah, you don't have to have it over at the memorial. You could have it on the lawn out there.
Without a doubt. I think people know enough to not infringe on people's space and what have you. Thank you.
I think we ought to, I think we ought to do it. I mean, that's not really the issue here on the agenda. But we could see people differently and put it on the front lawn instead of over here at the side of the memorial.
Okay. I mean, I just, with social distancing and most of the folks being, you know, vulnerable age and...
So, how do you, how do you guys feel about having the ceremony? Can you, is that something that you can do?
We can put something together. I mean, we have, I mean, we can find folks often. We're just looking after the best interest of the folks. They're going to be out there. And wanted your opinion. I didn't know if it was the safest thing to do right now.
Oh, maybe it'd be a good show, too, about showing we can, we're going to press on to do things and just doing it a little bit different. So, good thing.
Taking precautions and still have the event.
So, do you have some sort of standard that you would want us to do? Or is there some sort of guidelines that we need to take into consideration?
I would just think that we would, in our announcement, encourage the social distancing. Masks optional, but respect others. And go forward.
It'll be outside, but the concern is, if it's inclement weather, then I think what we do is just cancel it, as opposed to trying to move it indoors someplace.
I think that's right.
Okay. Well, the only thing we have on the agenda is the report. And they gave us the report.
Yeah.
So, anything else we're going to have to do, we have to put on another agenda.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back up to 1.5. Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding the Recycled Trailers.
We've had this discussion for a couple of weeks, and I think after last Monday, we left it in your court. You were going to follow up a little bit, Commissioner Blue, so...
Okay. Well, I talked to Barry Lovelace, who Shane's been in touch with, and he said that we will continue to, they'll continue to take the recycled trailers indefinitely. And so, if we want to continue the program, we can do it. Really, what happened was there was this big kerfuffle over the fact that we, they'd moved, the city had decided to close down their dumpsters. Everything's staying the same with the city as far as curbside. That's what Mr. Lovelace told me. They'll continue to accept that and our trailers. And so, really, that, again, kind of misreporting on that got everybody all excited. And everything's going to basically stay the same, other than their dumpsters that they have.
The ci...
The city decided not to have those dumpsters where people could bring their stuff. But they're going to continue to have their curbside accordingly.
So, I don't, I'm not familiar with what the city had. So, the city had dumpsters out at the...
They had about eight dumpsters.
And those were canceled, but they're going to continue to do their, you know, where the guy goes around.
I just, I just, it seems, the number I heard, it makes, I mean, I just, what I read in the news, or, was it $60,000?
I don't believe that.
Well, $60,000. They did it for 60.
They did it for 60 grand.
How can eight dumpsters cost $60,000? It's neither here nor there.
And I could go into more detail, but a lot of taxpayers would not like to hear it.
Well, just a little more clarification. Their reports of discontinuing starting May 9th was doing away with the dump. People bringing it out.
That was us going out there for free. Now, here's the other thing, and I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Harris. You can take anything you want out there, but it's going to be treated as trash. So, if you want to separate it, separate it. You're going to have to pay when you drive across that scale. And when you go back out, you're going to pay. So, I mean, you weigh it, and then you pay on the way out. So, you can recycle all you want to, but it's going to be treated differently.
But the dumpsters probably will not be there to put the recycling.
They're not. They're not going to be.
Well, so you take them out to the trash.
You're taking trash, basically.
Yeah, you're taking trash. So, you're not recycling anything.
So, here's what's happening, basically, from what I got, and I talked to him for a while about it.
Sure.
The city will continue to take assorted recycled stuff. And so, that's their issue. They just discontinued dumpsters. We, if we continue with our recycled trailers, that'll be the only thing that county residents have. That'll be free if we continue this program. Otherwise, if they take it over there, they pay just, and I asked him specifically. I said, will you pay for that?
Yeah.
So, that's where they stand. That's for publics.
So, just for clarification, if we take our trailers out there, recycle it, and our people unload it, that stuff does get recycled?
No comment.
That's why I was...
I'm not going to tell you it's recycled or anything else.
There's a chance it'd be recycled.
A chance of just about anything. I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know. And that's their policy. So, that brings us to where, whether we want to spend the money here or not.
Did they offer, did they offer that the county could spend, I'm not saying we're going to do it, $60,000, they leave the dumpsters there?
I didn't approach that.
Oh, you said if we want to pay for them.
No, no, I'm talking about our trailers. If we want to continue with our trailers, it's a service to the community, as it had been, without any change in what we do with them. And he said that would be, you know, the same agreement we have now.
But we don't know.
The question is, what is our agreement now? That's the real question.
Well, my question is, if I go back to that, is it being recycled?
I asked the city manager that, and he said yes. I said, all the recycled stuff, because if you go back to the dumpsters, eight dumpsters out there, people take their stuff, you don't have to separate them. Just put cans and plastic and everything, just dump it in for recycled dumpsters, okay? And I asked the city manager if that was in fact recycled. And he said, yes, it was, that they have a, they have a separating facility that they take. And I know that some of those exist. And they separate the plastic and the aluminum and the metal and all that kind of stuff. So, he said, yes, it was. So...
Well, I've talked to a lot of hardcore recyclers in the last couple of weeks. I don't know if Joe D. has it as well. And long discussions, and they, even though they're hardcore recyclers, if it's, they don't want to go through all the work of doing it if it's just going to be shoved in the landfill and not actually, you know, and why should we pay the expense for our maintenance to travel out there and then cross our fingers when we take it out there? They're just going to be recycled.
Well, the city manager said it was recycled.
But the city manager doesn't work at Republic Services. And so, Republic Services said that for the time being, things will remain as they are. What the city did over here was a money-saving measure. And really, because it was misreported in a couple of places, it got this whole thing going. We've seen this kind of misreporting in the past for the county of Kirk. So, people got real upset about it. Things remain the same for us. And whether there's, and here was the wording, basically, at present, there's a market for those recyclables. That's always the subject to change. So, and, but some of the places where they had been taking it, some of them, there was none of return on the investment.
So, bottom line is, all recycling stays in place. Pickup by the city, the residents and wherever. County trailers stay in place. This recycled. The only thing that's eliminated are the eight dumpsters at the landfill.
Right. One more question, and you may or may not have the answer. Is there certain things we've been recycling that there's not a market for, and there's no sense in recycling?
We didn't get into those kinds of specifics. Just, the thing is, that the world economy in some places where it had been recycled, it's our junk, and it was their treasure for a while. Those economies have risen up a little bit. Some places don't need to pick through our trash and make a living anymore. And so, you find somebody else who does. If there's a good return on investment, they deal with them then. That's what I got out of the conversation.
Okay. Shane, you've been in the middle of this. You have some comments?
I do. Since the city is going to close their free dumpsters down, what's going to happen to us is we're going to see a large uptick in our recycle, especially at the Hay Street location and possibly some of the other ones. But we are going to see a large uptick in the recycling man-hours it's going to take to move all that to the, you know, the transfer station.
My, you know, Shane and I talked about this on and off for the last few weeks. And one thing we bounced around is maybe doing away with the trailer at Hay Street, since people in town are, still have access, curbside, and maybe using our two trailers, especially out at Hunt, that they could use it an extra time a month, as much as they recycle it in the other locations as well. Using those two trailers rather than having one permanently 24/7 at Hay Street, using it on the out locations.
Well, there are a lot of people that live outside of the city limits in the county that are not in Center Point or Turtle Creek or Hunt or anywhere. So, if you move, if you eliminate that trailer, you eliminate recycling for them.
But we'd be moving it around more on the out locations.
Yeah, I'm saying, but, me, for instance, I don't, I'm not going to drive to Center Point or Hunt to recycle, but I will drive past the Hay Street place to recycle.
Well, one thing Shane did, like I could just state, he's feeling they're going to be inundated with extra.
Well, they are. Means there's a real desire for it.
What does this project cost us?
Shane's got some numbers on that, Barry.
I don't have them right at the moment, but we do.
I don't have them with me.
I forget the actual man-hours.
We had them, we had them last session.
Yeah, about a few man-hours. It's like, at least half a, or half a person. I mean, it's a lot, because it's two, two people going out, and it's two hours of computer, I mean, it's...
And gasoline.
Yeah. You're probably somewhere in the, 15,000 to 20,000 a year.
Did we find out, did we find out if the trailers must be used for that purpose?
The newest grant trailer, we have to keep that up until August of this year, and then we're free to do whatever we want to with it. But the first recycled trailer, the older one we have, we can do whatever we want to with it right now.
I think we continue it through this budget year. Get this through August. And then, we look at it as a budget process, whether it's a program worth continuing. Well, you know, I would propose that we, since they are going to continue to take it out there, we will monitor as close we can, make sure it is getting recycled, and start our trailers back. I would suggest, right now, because the way, a lot of the people in Hunt sound like their garage is bulging at the seams with recyclables, so let's get a trailer out there as quick as possible. And then, or alter, alter it, like I said earlier, maybe take it away from Hay Street. I think it would, like you said, it's going to take some, away from some people.
Why would you, if the subject is recycling, and the concern is you're going to get too much more, an increase in recycled material, why would you take it away? Doesn't make sense.
Well, it seems like, they felt like a lot of the city people that would have that curbside are bringing it there as well. Getting a bunch at one time and bringing it through there. Isn't that what you?
Yes. There, I mean, there's, there's people from the city that comes by. They're, if they have large, large items, whatever, whatever it is, they don't want to, they absolutely refuse to go out to the landfill. And that was, they were just adamant about it. So, they, they liked the trailers, but some of it is, you know, the city needs to take care of the city, and the county takes care of the county.
I think we'll leave everything the way it is, the way to look at it as part of the budget.
Yeah. Let's get it back started, I guess.
In that regard, I do have something to say.
Okay.
Recycling is a luxury, guys. That's not a county function. It's not mandated by the state or the federal government. We're going through a severe economic crisis. We're going to, I'm going to present my proposed budget, which nobody's going to like here in a little bit. But let me tell you, I propose no funding for anything that is not a mandated necessity that the county government is supposed to do.
But that's next year, huh?
Well, I understand we're going to finish that this fiscal year. But in principle, as admirable and laudable as it is to recycle, I don't think that the county has the money at this point to be able to continue to do that. It's not a necessity. It's a luxury.
We may spend that much money that's budgeted for this with all this extra COVID stuff by the time we get to that point. We may have already for all we know.
You bet.
I agree with that. I mean, I've never been a huge fan of this program, start with, because it isn't a government funding. But it's in the budget for this year, so I can continue. We are under obligation to keep one trailer working through August. So, I'm pretty much sure the judge has view on this one. Is that a motion?
I don't have to say anything.
I think we just pass it. It is what it is. I think that's what we're saying.
Shane, continue this program as it's been, as it's going.
Okay.
Report back to us when it starts stacking up.
Yes, sir. I'll keep, keep the figures on what we're doing. Man-hours and time and weights.
So, where we, where we're at at this date and time, what's your plan? I mean, where do the trailers go? Where's the trailer go?
Well, we should have one trailer at the shop right now, and then we, I think the date calls for it to be at Center Point.
Get back to the normal routine?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Then with that, I think it's time for us to take a morning break. Court will be in recess for five minutes. We'll start back at 10:15. Item 1.6, Update Regarding the Status of the Human Resources Department Remodeling Project. Mr. Evans?
Okay. I did get some information from a contractor that does that. He said he cleaned up these four plans and submitted that to the fire marshal. And I still have not gotten a date from him at this point. I had to call him this morning to remind him that I need something here pretty quick. But I don't, I don't have a date, a firm date.
It's, you don't have a date from the fire marshal, or when it's going to go to the fire marshal?
Oh, well, no, he's already done that. It's just, you know, it's just kind of a response from the fire marshal. What he's proposed, is it approved or disapproved? That I haven't gotten yet.
So, is it the fire marshal's cam ride?
That's what I'm understanding at this point. But I want to, I did call him first thing this morning, said I need to, you know, because he gave me this information last week. So, I was wanting something hopefully firm for this morning, so I could present that to y'all, and I don't have that.
Are you certain that's the fire?
Um, yes.
Fire marshal. Because then, I'd be glad to make a call to the city manager.
I, that's, I don't know. That, that's just the information I have.
That probably wouldn't hurt.
Okay. I'll call, I'll make, I'd be glad to call the city manager and say, we understand it's there. This is an issue we need to take care of as soon as possible.
Okay. We've got some 10 o'clock items that I need to take. The first one is 1.12, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Adopt a Resolution to Continue with Design and Construction of TechStop Off-System Bridge Projects, CSJ 0915-12-088, Aylers Road Bridge Replacement, CSJ 0915-15-087, Crossing Street Bridge Replacement, and CSJ 0915-15-097, the WIT Road Bridge Replacement, Presects 2 and 3. County Commissioner, Engineer Charlie Hastings.
Thank you. Kirk County has entered into advanced funding agreements with TechStop for the design and construction of both Aylers Road and Crossing Street Bridges. However, Crossing Street was placed on hold to resolve public sentiment concerns related to public access and use of the Wild Loopy River post-construction. Kirk County has since attempted to enter into an additional advanced funding agreement for the WIT Road Off-System Bridge Replacement Project. However, TechStop has placed this project in hold until either Kirk County resolves the issues with Aylers Road, I'm sorry, until either Kirk County resolves to continue with Aylers Road and Crossing Street projects, or reimburse TechStop all state funds expended to date, which Aylers Road, TechStop has expended a little over $46,000 in engineering and surveying, and a little over $66,000 for Crossing Street in engineering. The county engineer has researched the public concerns of Crossing Street and worked with TechStop engineers to resolve them. The new bridge will be at approximately the same height as the existing one, and access to the river will remain as it is today. The new bridge will be wide enough to accommodate state safety concerns and requirements, and as well as pedestrian access. And vehicle speeds can and will be controlled with various geometric designs of the road and traffic signage. County engineer recommends that the court adopt a court order authorizing TechStop to continue with design and construction of Off-System Bridge Project, CSJ 0915-12-088, Aylers Road Bridge Replacement. Bridge Replacement, and CSJ 0915-15-087, Crossing Street Bridge Replacement, and CSJ 0915-15-097, Wit Road Bridge Replacement. These are in precincts two and three, and I do have a, a rendering of what the Crossing Street Bridge will look like, um, once it's reconstructed, and I'm going to pass that out.
So Charlie, if you could, very simply, very succinctly, just summarize what you're asking us to do.
Asking for the court to move forward with the design and construction to authorize TechStop to move forward.
On each one of these?
As previously funded and planned.
On each one?
On, on all three of the, the projects. Yes, sir.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Letts, to approve, uh, continue, the continuation of all three bridge projects, Aylers Road, Crossing Street, and Wit Road. Uh, is there any discussion?
I would.
There is.
There's a lot of discussion. Let me, if I may, if I may. Uh, this, uh, the, the, sort of the center of gravity on this, pardon the pun, but the center of gravity is Crossing Street Bridge. I don't think there's, the, the public has been very involved in this. Uh, county moved, agreed with TechStop in 2007 to enter through this agreement to redesign and replace Crossing Street Bridge. Uh, and in 2010, in, first of all, the bridge, we don't know the structural integrity of the bridge. No, it's unknown, okay? So in 2010, the public submitted a petition signed by 1,100 people in Center Point area to not replace that bridge. The problem was, it was assumed that the replacement of the bridge in Crossing Street was going to be like the bridge that was replaced at Highway 1350 in the Guadalupe River, which was way above the water. That too used to be a low-water crossing. So the public there was very upset and very against replacing the low-water bridge in Center Point and bring, at, at Lyons Park, because that's part of the park, okay? People use it, they swim from it, they fish from it, et cetera. So with that 1,100 people being, being very strongly about it, that's, was the issue. Charlie and I had a meeting with TechStop in January, and we said, you know, TechStop sent a letter to the judge saying you owe us $67,000.
Yep.
For Crossing Street. You know, make up your mind what you're going to do. The, when we met with TechStop, we said, let's look at what our options are. We can pay you the $67,000, okay? And we can leave it as is, or we can make it a pedestrian-only bridge to make it safe, okay? That was an option. Uh, and if we make it a pedestrian-only bridge, uh, would we not, could we avoid paying the $67,000? They came back with a letter to Charlie and said, no, you still owe us the $67,000 because we spent it. So the only thing you can do is do one, two, one of two things, okay? You can either pass the $67,000, okay? And you can do with it whatever you want to with the bridge. Let me finish, okay? Or we can put in the bridge like Charlie described, same low-water crossing as the current bridge. Um, I had a town hall meeting, when was it, Charlie?
Thursday.
Last Thursday? Um, not many people showed up, but it was a town hall meeting to discuss this. Uh, after that meeting, uh, one of the people there, as a matter of fact, there were only four people showed up, but one of them was Richard Moser, who's an attorney there, and I'd like to read in the record what he said. He said, "I will say I went into this meeting wondering why we were revisiting an idea that was universally rejected 10 years ago. I left thinking this plan can be part of an ongoing revitalization of the park." So he changed his mind on that. "The new design is at the current level, about seven feet wider. Once completed, it will belong to the county and could be modified to increase recreational uses with the park. It also meets the needs of Curv-, the Center Point Volunteer Fire Department. Look at the new design. In my opinion, a rebuild of the bridge at the current location and height will enhance the park greatly. In the background, over the last 10 years, neither Kirk County or TechStop have handled this property, but that is water under the bridge." But that's water on the bridge, he said. "I support the current plan to build a bridge similar to the profile of the current bridge." So he felt, he felt he came into the meeting thinking he was against it, left meeting that it was the right thing to do to enhance the thing. We have other people that still feel, uh, opposed to it. Francis Lovett has sent a letter in saying she's against it. So I think the bottom line is, the bridge is probably going to cost $700,000 or so. But if we don't do that, we've got, we, the court has, has two options. Number one, leave the bridge as is, pay $67,000, and at some point, close the bridge to traffic, close to vehicle traffic. The other option is construct a new bridge, uh, low-water design as Charlie described, no additional cost to Kirk County because we can offset the costs that we have to, our 10% with other things that we've done around the county. And, but, and then the bridge will be controlled by the county. That means Charlie and Kelly, whatever, if they want to change the lane, the panthing, you know, make it more vehicular or less vehicular and more for pedestrians, the county can do that. So with that, that's sort of the background of, and the issues that we're talking about here.
The only thing I would ask you to expand on so the, the public knows what TechStop feels we owe them the $65,000 for.
For design? They've already.
The time and effort they took in designing it.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that was brought out.
Correct.
And looking at this photo, I don't know if people can see it, but it's going to be basically the same as.
It's wide, it's the same thing, only wider.
Okay.
Comment I want to make is that, and, uh, I was being criticized for the last probably, along with Mr. Twenty-one years, that's 21 years about Aylers Bridge.
Thought you were going to say 60 something.
But the issue on both, uh, the Center Point Bridge, Crossing Street Bridge, and Aylers Crossing, and all other bridges that are within this system, is that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this county. If those bridges wash out, uh, we have to repair them 100% on our own, and, uh, that's not acceptable to me when we have this program in place that we've already paid our in-kind 10% for both these bridges. Uh, and Wit Road is part of that mix as well. So I mean, to me, Aylers Crossing is the, you know, the reason it's been objection, repairing it or replacing it is that it basically serves one family right now. It used to, someone went in, bought up four, five different properties, and now it's owned by one person. Uh, at some point, that property will probably develop, this will enhance the value of that property, having it up, the bridge is now so low. But the fact that it serves one person is irrelevant. We cannot abandon that road without those people's agreement. They're not going to give us the agreement. Therefore, if that bridge washes out, which it could very easily at any time, uh, then we're stuck on a million-dollar bridge. So yes, it makes sense from the taxpayer standpoint to replace that bridge. And that takes care of Aylers. And Crossing's the same thing. If Crossing's to wash out and we say no, TechStop are walking away from it, then we're stuck with either having no bridge or we're paying it, uh, redoing it totally at our cost.
And the third bridge is, it, on Wit Road, which not a lot of people travel, but there's probably, I don't know, Verde Homes or something. They use that bridge all the time, Wit Road and Verde Creek. And, um, we had, there's no way to know what the load limit of that is. It's a, Charlie won, constructed in 1930s or.
Yes, sir.
Something that sort. The, the state doesn't know what the load capability is, so it's going to have to be closed at some time. If it does, you know, we're going to decide, county's going to decide whether to replace the bridge or abandon it completely. You can reroute everybody by another way, but that's no good. So there are three bridges at stake here. The, the decision is literally on, on Aylers and Crossing Street, what to do so we can do, have the county, the state do $2.5 million worth of bridge construction, of course.
Well, I get a little confused. So I'd like to, if I'm confused, I suspect the public may be confused. This bridge system is something that TechStop will fund, right?
Yes, sir. Through the Federal Off-System Bridge Program.
And it's, it's a matching grant, and we have, we're responsible for 10% of it?
Yes, sir.
And we've already accrued that?
Yes, sir.
So it's not going to cost the county any more money?
That's correct.
To finish these bridges? Well, I'm looking at it from dollars and cents. If we got to pay $67,000 because we're not going to finish it, uh, rather than pay nothing to let them finish it, let's finish it.
And another $40,000 at Aylers. So it's, it's $100,000 that we'd be obligated to pay.
So at present, what is our out-of-pocket cost for these? It's 10%, zero?
It's zero because we did it at.
You already did.
In kind at.
I'll, I'll give you the list. So Cade, Cade Loop Bridge got done.
Right.
Um, Arrowhead got done, Crossing Street and Aylers were all on the list, and it all added up to $3.5 million. So we spent $350,000, the court did, already, 10 years ago, and we're up to date, and they've just been waiting. You've been, we've been kicking this can down the road. When are we going to do Crossing? So they've been very, very patient with us. It's been a long time.
If I'm not mistaken, the $350,000 was primarily donated right of way from Cade Loop. A large, and, and other work.
But it counted towards our in-kind.
Right.
So they, they said that counts toward, they split that 350 between all those projects, and we met all of our obligations by doing that.
Without spending, I mean, we put any cash out there. It was in-kind work we did at, it's on Cade Loop.
So ballpark, these three bridges are going to cost something, $2.5 million. So 250,000 is that? So we've already got $350,000 credit, so that's first order.
And the insurance that Commissioner Letts mentioned, uh, if, if they were to wash out. It's basically an insurance policy.
Now, that, that's huge.
Very big.
That, that's a million-dollar bridge right there.
And this design remains pretty much the same on the, the one in contention.
Crossing Street.
At Crossing Street that Mrs. Lovett had questioned. My, my question will be in the design of it. Can you, can that bridge, we have a lot of these in precinct one that have the teeth on the side of them, these, these tend to be slippery after a while. Can that be added? Is that really expensive with that?
I don't, I don't, it's not going to be necessary on this because the water's been, flows under during normal flow.
Sure.
Uh, we get water over the top of that after storms. But it, it dries up after a week or two, and then we're, we're good to go.
All right. Continuous flow would create some problems, moss or slick.
The only thing I would add is, in the current TechStop plans, in 2021 is a replacement of Wit Road Bridge, 2022 is a replacement of Aylers Bridge, and, and, and the one, Crossing Street's not even in their schedule, so it'll be done someday.
But the bottom line is, the county's getting three new bridges paid for by TechStop. We've already paid our matching grant portion of it, and it's not costing us anything.
Correct.
So why would we not want improvements that we've already paid for? So I'll make a motion that we approve.
Well, we, we've already made a motion. I made the motion.
He made it, that's fair.
Okay. Okay, then let's call a vote. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero. Good.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 1.13, consider to discuss and take appropriate action to set a public hearing for June 22nd, 2020 at 10:00 AM to discontinue maintenance portions of Riverview Road and Roland Lane in Precinct Four. Charlie Hastings.
Thank you. The City of Ingram has recently annexed portions of Riverview Road and Roland Lane, creating confusion related to maintenance responsibilities between Kirk County Road and Bridge Department and the City of Ingram Street Department. The portions of both roads that have been annexed are now the ownership and maintenance of responsibilities of the City of Ingram. In order to allow for the City of Ingram to fully serve their recently annexed citizens, especially centralized sanitary sewer service, it is both necessary and prudent that maintenance of all of the said roads become their responsibility. The legal descriptions of both Riverview and Roland Lane have been shared before, I don't have them attached, but, um, uh, what we're asking for today is a public hearing to be set. According to Texas statutes, the court may order public roads laid out, discontinued, closed, abandoned, vacated, or altered. Uh, the statute defines the relevant terms. Abandon is to relinquish the public's right-of-way and use of the road. Discontinue is to discontinue the maintenance of the road, and vacate is to terminate the existence of the road by direct action of Commissioner's court of the county. We're only asking for, uh, today for discontinuance, uh, that we discontinue maintenance. So the county engineer recommends that the court set a public hearing for June 22nd, 2020 at 10:00 AM to discontinue maintenance of the portions of Riverview Road and Roland Lane that have not been annexed by the City of Ingram, Precinct Four, and there is a, a drawing that shows what that looks like in your packet.
I move to approve as read.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Baloo, to set a public hearing for June 22nd, uh, to discontinue maintenance on portions of Riverview, Riverview Road and Roland Lane. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero. Next item on the agenda is 1.14, consider to discuss and take appropriate action to adopt the Kirk County 2019 Annual Road Conditions Report, authorized filing of, uh, of said, 2009, of said annual road condition report, and authorize county judge to execute and submit an application to TechStop for the County Transportation Infrastructure Grant Program 2020 Call for Projects, precincts one, two, three, and four. Charlie Hastings.
Thank you. On February 27th, 2020, the Texas Transportation Commission adopted rules codified as Title 43 Texas Administrative Code, Sections 15.180 through 15.197, that prescribe the policies and procedures governing the Texas Department of Transportation's implementation of the County Transportation Infrastructure Fund Grant Program under Transportation Code, Chapter 256, Subchapter C. Pursuant to the program, TechStop will administer a grant program using the Transportation Infrastructure Fund and provide funding to eligible counties for transportation infrastructure projects located in areas of the state affected by increased oil and gas production. On March 26th, 2020, the commission specified the period of time in fiscal year 2020 for submission of county grant applications for the program and the total amount of grant money available for the designated period. Uh, the application period is April 27th, 2020 through May 27th, 2020. Applications are required to be submitted electronically by email to techstop@ctif2020@techstop.gov, and the completed application consists of the following three documents, the application form, prioritized list of transportation infrastructure projects, and the county-approved road condition report. The estimated grant funds available are $250 million. It has been, uh, gone through a special, uh, formula by the comptroller in Kirk County. If you'll look, I've got, uh, in your packet, a list of all the counties that qualified, and we qualified for $79,026. We've got a little bit of oil and gas production facilities in our county, just enough that we were able to qualify for roughly $80,000. We did not qualify in 2014, the last time they did a call for projects. Uh, we didn't, I guess we didn't have Fox Tank back then. For whatever reason, we didn't qualify, but we do this year, and so we're, we want to make that application. So according to TechStop, Kirk County is eligible for $79,206. However, counties are encouraged by TechStop to apply for more than their estimated amount in the likelihood that not all 254 Texas counties either, uh, will apply for it, or they even qualify for their share of the available 250 million, in which case the second call for projects would be issued. Therefore, the attached application is for multiple road projects, Wit Road and Center Point River Road totaling $185,275, of which $148,220 would be eligible for the 80% grant. While Kirk County would need to allocate a 20% grant match of $37,055 in our upcoming fiscal year 2021 Road and Bridge Department budget, the Road and Bridge Department historically budgets over $600,000 a year towards road maintenance and plans to reconstruct or seal coat both of these roads regardless of the grant. Therefore, this grant has the potential to offset any budget shortfalls anticipated. this grant has the potential to offset any budget shortfalls anticipated for fiscal year 2021. That's why we're applying for it. County engineer recommends that the court adopt the Kirk County 2019 Annual Road Condition Report, authorized filing of said 2019 Annual Condition Report, and authorize the county judge to execute and submit an application to TaxDOT for the County Transportation Infrastructure Grant Program 2020 Call for Projects, and this affects precincts one, two, three, and four. There is a separate road report for each of your precincts that is included in the packet, and we will need each commissioner to sign, and it'll, I think, be notarized. I, I believe it gets notarized. Jody can help with that. Are there any questions?
I appreciate the amount of time. I know you spent, Charlie, on this. It's, it's what we thought that it, you know, it wasn't worth the effort, but I know you spent a lot of time working on it, and I appreciate it because of the fact that we certainly, we have some funds, and maybe some additional time.
And the, really, the good thing, this would not be possible if it wasn't for the past work of past administrations in the Road and Bridge Department and continued upkeep of databases that were put together years ago. Kelly kept up with them. Crystal kept up with them. Vicki, it's been a team effort.
I move for approval of submission, of approval of the, of the road maintenance report, and authorize County Judge to submit an application.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Baloo, to approve the road condition report and submit it to TaxDOT. Any other discussion? Okay. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero.
Just need to be clear on that, or that we're submitting the report with the application of the County Transportation Infrastructure Grant Program.
Right. So, clarify. Item 1.15. Consider discuss and take appropriate action for the court to set a public hearing for 10 o'clock on June 22, 2020, for revision of the plat for Tierra Linda lots 33, 34, 35R, and Recreation Area in Precinct One. Charlie Hastings.
This proposal combines Lot 33, which is 0.53 acres, Lot 34, 0.38 acres, and a portion of a recreation area into Lot 33R, 1.13 acres. It also combines Lot 35R, 0.61 acres, with a portion of a recreation area, which is owned by the Homeowner Association. Access to these lots will be from Tierra Vista. County engineer requests the court to set a public hearing for 10:00 a.m. on June 22, 2020, for revision of plat for Tierra Vista, lots 33, 34, and 35R, and the Recreation Area, plat file number 16-01809, and volume four, page 94, Precinct One.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion's been, motion's been made by Commissioner Baloo, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to set the public meeting for Tierra Vista lots 33, 34, 35R, and the Recreation Area for 10 o'clock on June 22. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Let's go back to the regular agenda. We're on item 1.7. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the mowing policy for Flat Rock Park. Mr. Moser.
Thank you, Judge. It was, a request has been made to not mow areas in Flat Rock Park so the wildflowers could flourish and the butterflies could be happy and things like that. I think it's a good request. The, the request was that none of the Flat Rock Park dog area be mowed inside of the circle pathway. And you, everybody has a map there of what we're talking about. It's in the dog park. And there's too much dog recreational activity goes on in that center portion of the, of that area with frisbees and ball throwing and things like that. So, instead of even considering not mowing that, which Shane mows in his crew, mows all the time and does an unbelievably good job, the recommendation would be that we consider not mowing the extreme east end of the dog park, which is shown in red there, which is not mowed very often anyway. And then another area, which is just to the west of the bridge going to the dog park, which is cordoned off so that traffic and automobiles and all cannot go, and it's, it's, an area is mowed. It, it looks nice, but those two areas could be taken off the mowing plan and enable some wildflowers to grow and, and not interfere with any other activities in the park. So, Shane, you want to comment on that?
I, I agree with Commissioner Moser. We, years ago, we did try not mowing that center section, and by the end of the season, it was really bad. It really looked, it, it just didn't look very pretty at all down there, and you couldn't, you couldn't play with the dogs, the balls, or anything else like that. The other, the other request, right, is that they wouldn't work. It, it wouldn't cause any kind of problems.
So, I, I move that we have a policy, if that's appropriate, of not mowing the areas designated in the, in the handout, which would be the east end, the far east end of the dog park area, in the area just adjacent to the bridge that crosses into the dog, dog park area from the rest of Flat Rock Park.
Which, which is the west here.
Well, it's, 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 it's not, it's just at the bridge. It's sort of center of the Flat Rock Park.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Letts. Let's make sure we word this correctly. And this is to approve a mowing policy for Flat Rock Park as designated on this diagram, which would be the east end and the part right by the...
Bridge.
Why, bridge?
Correct, correct. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero. Next item is item 1.9. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to address the reopening of departments within county government. Commissioner Harris.
Well, I think this is just an ongoing deal to report what, what is going on here as far as getting, trying to get back towards normal. I can report that maintenance is back at full staff and working. I can report out there at our, at the extension. Somebody is there every day. Now, we don't completely oversee that. I'm talking to Michael Haynes that they're going by extension policy out of A&amp;M, and they're trying to get back to normal gradually. But you can get everything done out there.
But just for the record, we never close any departments.
No, we didn't, but we had staff, we...
This is reopening. I just wanted to let the public say, no, that we never, we never closed any of our departments.
But we, we didn't necessarily close them, but we weren't operating like we had in the past. And we discussed that earlier today, whether it be the tax office or, or whatever. We went through different, different stages, I would say. So, that's all I have. Anybody else have anything?
Only comment that I would have on that is, on the reopening, and really more of a question to Shane, I think that we probably need to figure out, to make sure that we're sanitizing at a, a level with having increased traffic and keep people in the courthouse, that we're doing a, more than our regular job has. I mean, maintenance does their maintenance during the year. I know they're stepped up there, what they're doing, but we also have a night contract cleaning crew that comes in, which would be the time that we would want to do a little bit of extra effort, and that's not under their contract. So, I'd like to ask Shane to check with them, that, our night crew, and see, you know, if we can come up with a proposal that will go in there to much more thoroughly sanitize all of our offices. And who else need to look at, or some of our remote offices, is how we handle it. I think we need to make, go the extra mile, because there will be a lot more people in and out of courthouse.
Currently, they only work on the first floor, and they do a limited amount of cleaning mops. We, the tax office and the county clerk's office wipe down counters and stuff, but as far as doing a sanitation type, that, that's not part of the contract. And if, like Commissioner Letts said, we'd have to revisit that contract and, and have them do more, and probably, probably it costs more. I don't know.
And I, you know, it may not be something we want to do, but it's just something that I'd like to find out the cost for doing it because, especially the countertops that are sanitized, and make sure that they're doing, what they're using, sanitizes doorknobs, countertops, things like that, and that.
Okay. And this would be throughout the, all three floors of the courthouse?
I think yes. I mean, I think that's, we have a certain obligation to try to keep that.
I would go along with that if, unless, rather, this thing of, with the courts, courthouse, the entire courthouse being some kind of a sanitized unit, self-contained, and nobody gets in or out without being checked over, then there's no point. If you're, if they're going to force that on us, if that ends up really having to happen, then I say that's good enough.
Anyway, let's find out what it would cost. We may not be able to afford it, but I think that we need to at least find out what it would cost to do a little bit more on the sanitization.
But there's no action to be taken on this?
No, no.
Okay. Thanks, Shane. Anything else?
Well, you know, I'd just like to, maybe, maybe next time, let's, maybe we get some reports from different departments, whether it be the clerk's office, exactly what their policies are at, at this time, tax office, auditors, engineer. I know they're, what everybody's doing, how are they managing their offices now? What are we doing, getting back to...
It's probably a good idea for us to at least kind of take an inventory of where we are with all our offices.
Without a doubt.
Yeah. I mean, I know the, I visit with the district clerk, and she's, it was open last week, all week. I don't know, just so the district clerk's office, I know.
I don't know. County clerk's coming, she's open.
The county clerk's open.
Right. Well, that's good to know.
Doors were locked for a while, but I can get better dates next week if y'all prefer a report.
I think Veterans Service has been open. They've just been working remotely, but they're doing everything that they can.
I think it's good to bring it out to everybody, actually, where we're at. County attorney, uh...
Office is open.
There's office, everybody's manned.
Uh, we're manned on a rotating basis, but everybody's working remotely if they're not in the office.
Yeah, that's it.
It'd be a good thing to, maybe for Lisa Walter to do a press release that courthouse is open, and all departments are open.
The only difference in my office is that we're not taking cash. Any hot check can be made online or over the phone, and that's, that's not become a problem at all.
I think we still, still maybe some adjustments in, well, there are adjustments in every office as to how we do business, but we are open.
We are. We'd just like to know how they're open, you know.
Who's in, who's in the best position to go around and check?
Sure.
And get, get the, the footnotes as to, you know, you, you're working part of your office remotely, not taking cash. That's a good explanation?
Exactly.
It'd just be kind of nice to know that, where we are, so we can at least tell the public what's open and how we're open.
And how we're open.
And the times that we're open.
That's the reason for me putting it on there each week, and see if it changes from week to week. Good to know.
I don't, I don't want to put the sheriff in charge of that.
No. The only, the only thing I have is, is like I said earlier, it's causing us an issue out here in the hallway drastically for parts of one office. They're wanting part of their office conduct to be done out here in the hallway. You know, one office is opening 8:30 to 11:30, and then not again until 2:00 to 4:30. And that makes them stack up from noon to 2:00, sitting out here in the hallway. You know, it, I just, and I know none of us can tell an elected official what to do or how to do it. I've told you all that several times myself, I think. But, but we do need, we do need, and I guess technically the county judge is in charge of the courthouse, because it's never been relinquished by court order to the sheriff. That's the way the local government agrees, I believe. So...
What do you want me to sign?
I'm, I'm just need, I need offices to do their business inside their office and to open it up to as many as possibly can be in their office during that time to keep it from being cluttered out here in our hallways. And that, I have, actually, I've ordered this morning some of the little footstep, you know, the distancing, the six-foot that I'll have coming in, that we can place in the hallways, and that helps with the social distancing. But we need to do business in our own offices, not in the hallway, making it hard for everybody else.
You know, Sheriff, probably the, the best way for us to get a good inventory of where we are with regard, what's open at the courthouse and when it's open, could we ask you to work with your bailiffs? The three, three deputies we have assigned to the courthouse, they're probably in the best position to know, because they're in the courthouse, they're on all floors, just to kind of be able to give us a report.
Actually, right now, Judge, I only have one, because I have two openings, if, if y'all recall, and that's making it harder. I'm having to sign other people over here. I'd rather y'all work just with the elected officials on, on what their manpower status is. I don't know, and I don't know which ones they're sending home. I heard some were working half-day, some were working three days a week. That I'm not concerned. I'm more concerned about the, the actual activity in the courthouse.
And what we'll do is, I will work with our court coordinator, and we will send an email out to all the departments and all the elected officials, individual, so we get individual responses back, not, not, not a thread, individual request, so that we can report back to the public how the courthouse is open.
Good.
I'll do that. It's time to implement the burn ban again. Item 1.10. Consider discuss and take appropriate action on implementation of the burn ban.
I move to implement the burn ban for our policy.
Second.
I notice there was no hesitation from anyone on that one. Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to implement the burn ban. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero, with an exclamation mark. Item 1.11. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to determine whether to allow the retail fireworks permit holders to sell fireworks to the public in celebration of Memorial Day, beginning May 22 and ending at midnight on May 27 of this year.
I make motion, we authorize the sale of fireworks for Memorial Day, as indicated in the resolution.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Baloo, to approve the sale of fireworks for Memorial Day weekend as indicated. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero. Okay. Back over on the regular agenda is 116. Presentation.
Let me, I want to go back to 112, if you will. We approved the court order on all the bridges and the letters to be sent. Do we need to say and authorize, Judge, assign the, send that letter? That's the draft. I don't think we need to.
I believe the court order is sufficient, that we're going to proceed with all the bridges.
It's all they need.
Okay.
Good enough.
Good.
Thanks.
Okay. So, it's now time for me to present my proposed budget. And let me, one there.
I'll give this to Harvey.
And so the public knows what we're talking about. I have a spreadsheet that looks like this. And this is my proposed budget, but I have some prefacing remarks before we get into some of the details about it. And let me start off by saying that I realize that I'm going to be the most unpopular person in Kirk County with this budget.
I'll second that.
And I, all in favor, raise your hand.
We take the mark.
For the public's benefit, I went back and surveyed the last 15 years of our fiscal budget. Fiscal year runs from October 1 through September 30. And so, I went back 15 years, and we have had deficit budgets 13 of those 15 years. We had one that was a surplus budget, and one that was what I call almost balanced budget, was within $146 of being balanced budget. So, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's balanced. But we have a pattern, and I think it's a dangerous pattern, of deficit budgeting. I particularly focused on the last three fiscal years, and I focused on those because I had the opportunity to observe two of them sitting out there in the blue chairs, and I had the privilege, if you call it that, of sitting in the black chair last year and actually experiencing the budget process. In, in 2000, in the fiscal year 1718, we had a deficit budget of $1.3 million. three million dollars. The following year, in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, we had a deficit of two-point-four-eight million dollars. Last year, fiscal year nineteen twenty, we had a deficit of two-point-seven million dollars. So as we prepare this budget, I start off with a two-point-seven million dollar budget carryover from last year, that's a deficit. If I average those three years, we're averaging two-point-one-six million dollars deficit budget per year for the last three years. And personally, I find that unacceptable, especially in this crisis, this economic destruction that we're experiencing, which is the worst that we, any of us have ever seen in our lifetimes. So we got to start somewhere, and I know it's going to be painful, but we have to start somewhere. And so while some of my recommendations may appear to be drastic, it's a place to start because we're going to have to figure out a way to get a handle on this budget. I liken the budget, and I mentioned this last year in the budget process, to the game of musical chairs, everybody remembers musical chairs. Well, when the music stops, somebody doesn't have a place to sit. And if this COVID-19 pandemic is not music stopping, I don't know what is. It stopped us dead in our tracks, it stopped the economy, and we have to respond to it aggressively. We can't just keep doing the business as usual, or as we like to refer to it here at the court, the budget culture. We have to change that culture. So one of the things that I want to do is, if you look at my budget, the way I approached this budget was with one overarching principle guideline, and that is, what is it that we have to do as a county? What is a mandatory function of the county? If we have to do it, if we're, if it's constitutionally required that we handle the justice system, which it is, then we have to handle it, and we have to fund that. But if it is not mandated, either by constitution or by statute, then I call that optional funding, not mandatory funding. So I tried to make a distinction between what was mandated and not mandated, and I'm proposing that we defund the non-mandated services that the county provides. We just went through this essential and non-essential services analysis for the pandemic, I want to approach it along those lines. There are things that are absolutely necessary, they're required, and they're mandated, and then there are those things that are not mandated, non-essential, discretionary, or option. And that was the litmus test that I used in putting together this proposed budget. I think it's important that we, as a court, refocus on the difference between mandated and non-mandated services, especially when we're going to have the types of problems that we're going to have with the budget this coming year. And we need to prioritize what's mandated, and we need to very, very carefully look at what is discretionary or optional, and if we have money available, we can consider doing that. A very good example would be, like we were talking about today, recycling. Recycling is a good thing, everybody likes it, but it is not essential, it's not something that the county has to do. And so that would be a victim of what I would propose to defund in this year's coming budget. So that the public has an idea, because I know the commissioners are looking at the spreadsheet, I have put together a budget that will be eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars short of being balanced. I call that an almost balanced budget, that's as close as I can get. I don't know what it's going to look like at the end of this process, but that's where I want us to start. And I took a ten-step method to do this, and again, this is controversial, and it will be cussed and discussed, I can assure you, probably many times. But number one, I'm proposing that we eliminate non-mandated services, that's the first thing we need to do. Number two, I propose no new hiring. Number three, no salary increases. Number four, no COLA. Number five, cut the non-recurring capital expenses that we had this past year, which included the airport, animal services, and IT, and we had capital projects in all three of those, to the tune of, I think, about nine-hundred thousand dollars, but. Then with regard to our capital purchases this year, which are mainly the sheriff's office for vehicles, and road and bridge, I think there's some equipment, and there's also some road construction, I propose that we finance that rather than take cash. Last year, we paid cash for all of it, this year, we don't have the money. I'm making, I'm making that proposal for a couple of reasons. It allows us to spread out the payment for these, these capital items over three years. I want to do it on a three-year certificate of obligation, and anybody that knows me knows I hate certificates of obligation, but I'm recommending that we do that, rather than lease them, because what we're trying to do is take into consideration our effective tax rate, and what we consider in establishing effective tax rates, and I've worked with the tax assessor-collector on this, Bob Reeves, as well as the auditor, that if we pay for these vehicles out of the budget, that goes into M and O, maintenance and operations, and that's used to establish what the effective tax rate is. If we finance it, it goes into P and I, principal and interest, and that is not considered as part of the effective tax rate. So this will give us some advantage in being able to do this. So we're not only amortizing the payment over a three-year period, we're also trying to protect our ability to fund and raise funds to operate the county government. And then, number eight, my eighth principle is, we have to add the new property values from our tax rolls, and that would be Hobby Lobby, Harbor Freight, Aspen Dental, Kane's Chicken, all these new properties in town, we get to add that revenue, the tax revenues off of those new properties, into the revenues in this budget. Now, nine and ten, as far as the steps in my method, I'm proposing that we have the same, use the same tax levy as last year, and then we have, I assume that we use the same tax rate as last year. So that's what I've done, and as we go forward, we'll talk about, a lot more about the details, but that budget, following those ten principles, results in going from two-point-seven million dollar deficit last year, to an eleven thousand dollar deficit this year. It's a huge step, it's a big task. I don't know if we can bite all of it off, but I want to try. And so that's what I'm going to be advocating as we go forward. And I think today is the day that the departments and the officials can access your budget information, you'll see it in there. For the departments and the officials, I've tried to keep your budgets pretty much what they were last year, so you're not going to see a big change. But what we're doing is, we're starting to analyze, is this necessary, or is it optional? And that's the discussion that I want to lead going forward. I think we start on June twenty-second with our first workshop, I think mid-June, we get the reports back, from the elected officials and department heads, and then we have our first workshop, I think, on the twenty-second, another one on June twenty-four, and then, is it June twenty-nine, the next one, something like that? We've got three workshops at the end of the month, and so between now and then, I know there's going to be a lot of talking, there're going to be a lot of questions, there's going to be a lot of pulling of hair and gnashing of teeth, I understand this, but we have to start somewhere, it's going to be painful, we're going to get through this. As I say, we're going to get through it together, shoulder to shoulder, six feet apart, and we're going to try to balance the budget.
Judge, I got something to say, and I want to share in your unpopularity, I guess, I want to challenge, we have a lot of our elected officials, we have several in here, we have several department heads and what have you, and I would challenge y'all to cut it another ten percent, we're not asking you to cut salaries or anything else, but additional cuts, I think, are needed. None of us have missed a check, there's a lot of people out there, our neighbors, community people, that have missed checks.
Absolutely.
And my, by God, we can, we can cut a little bit more, I've had one department head already come to me, planning on doing that, before this was even brought up, and I praise him. So I challenge the rest of you to come up with some cuts. We can wipe out that, sir.
Are you suggesting ten percent?
Take a look at your own budget.
Let me finish, ten percent reduction over what the judge has laid out here, is it suggested, or ten percent over last year?
Again, yeah, what he's laid out, what he's laid out.
So what he's done here?
Take it another step.
Another ten percent.
He's not going to look at some of the discretionary stuff that maintenance has that maybe Shane can cut back a little bit, or what Charlie has in engineering, maybe he can cut back.
Charlie's my hero, he got me eighty thousand dollars, I didn't know it was coming.
I know, I know, he's the one that already came up volunteering immediately to make extra cuts, but I challenge the rest of you to do the same.
I have a, I'll look your finish as well.
Go ahead.
One, I applaud the judge for taking the approach, I think it's something that we've needed to do a long time, is look at this. I differ with him a little bit on two points, really. One is, thirteen out of fifteen years, we had a deficit, how many of those years, I don't know the answer to this, but I will, as the auditor, how many of those years did we actually have a deficit in the year? Most of them are, we didn't.
Right.
In other words, they started looking like it didn't end up that way.
And the reason is, it's because of the way we budget. So the thing that, to go with a truly balanced budget, which I think is the right way to go, we need to look at some of our fundamentals of how we budget.
How you estimate.
It's employees. I've talked to.
And I, I agree, because most of it is from unfilled positions.
Right, unfilled positions, and I think that the way you get there is look historically at how much is coming out of that employment pool, it goes back into our budget, take that and say, we take ninety-five percent of the total salary and we budget that amount, you put the difference in the contingency or something like that, I've talked to, the city does it by putting ninety-five percent of the contingency fund, so that there's a little bit of leeway as to how it goes, it might be a little bit of work on the auditor's office, because of having to do transfers around, because we never know where the openings are going to be, but I think that that is part of the process. The other thing that I think we need to do is, we need to take a hard look at our longevity policy. It has cost us a lot as we're going forward. It was created, I don't know how many years ago, probably fifteen years ago or so, and the reason was to stop turnover, and it did a great job, it really slowed down in almost all departments. The problem is that the, that automatic increase at the, I don't know where the salary breakdown is, but somewhere in the, you know, sixty thousand, seventy thousand, all of those employees making more than that, all of a sudden, that automatic increase every three years, that's really kicking these salaries high. At the lower end, it's probably more important, but I think we need to look at that part of it. The other thing is looking at capping some of our grades, we've, I think we did it, but then we quickly gave exceptions to our policy, so I think that we need to look at that policy as well. So I think those are the things that I think that we need to look at, other than that, I think it's, you know, a welcome going through it and really evaluating what programs we should and shouldn't do.
And, and let me say that this is painful, there's no question this is painful, and I get to say this as the only veteran on the court, one of the things I learned in the Army is, somebody's got to make the tough decisions, and that falls to us. We are the command staff for this unit, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions, and I'm willing to fade the heat to do it, and I ask for your cooperation, looking at my fellow members of the court, let's do the best we can, it's going to be painful, but let's start the process. And I want to thank the auditor's office. For those of you that don't know, I had to explain to my wife why I have a brown bag lunch every Tuesday with the auditor's office, been doing this since March, we've been working tirelessly on this thing, they have put in untold man-hours helping me with this, and I know that they're committed to trying to help us get there in this process, but I thank you for what you've done to help me.
Judge, go back to your strategy, okay? You may get asked the auditor's office, it'd be nice to see what you've said of mandatory things versus, you know, good things to do, but by each department, you know, so you don't have to roll down through a lot of detail for, for instance, road and bridge or whatever, here's what's mandatory, here's what it wa, here was the budget last year, here's what the current budget proposed by yourself, and I agree with, with your strategy and policy, here's what it is this year, so you can see what the reduction is, and you can see what, what functions have been eliminated, if any.
Well, I think we're going to have a very robust discussion, and, and they can do that, because they, they helped me do that.
Right, okay, well, I'm just saying.
We get that information shared.
If you could get that to the commissioners, that would be, that would be very helpful, just so you could kind of do an apples and apples, last year, this year proposal, and what's eliminated. Question, when you looked at, when you created this, we looked at mandatory things, okay? Animal control, rabies control is mandatory, but adoption and all is not mandatory, so did you eliminate that?
We've got a process working right now with the Curb Your Pets Alive.
That's what I do.
And there's the, that's what we asked for, and that's what we got, so let me say this, we asked for it, we got it, and that can be outsourced.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, in this budget, in the bottom line here, was that taken out?
No.
Okay.
That's a question.
That's a question, so that was not taken out, so that was a ma, that's not a mandatory function, but you left that one in, okay? Veteran's service is not mandatory.
I took out.
Okay, that's not mandatory, so we take the veterans' things out, but you left animal adoption in.
I left animal control the way it is right now.
Okay.
I did not try to change it.
Okay, so it was like.
I took out the VSO.
Okay.
I took out the volunteer fire departments, and I took out the charitable giving.
So you've left some and took some others out.
Now, do I think some of this stuff may come back into the budget? Yes, I understand that, we're going to have a discussion about that, but when it comes out, we're going to have to cut other places, and so when Don's talking about the ten percent, I see this as a cut and taste going forward.
Sure.
But with the goal, is let's get an almost balanced budget.
Well, what you've done is, everybody has to make the case, make their case.
Absolutely.
And I think that's really healthy, anybody that wants to stay in the budget, makes their best case for it, and then we see if we can afford it, if we can, and it's necessary. Volunteer fire departments, for example, is exactly what I wanted to ask you about, because that's critical, and they already raised a lot of funds, and they would put them behind the eight ball by about twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Well, let me address both the VSO and the volunteer fire departments, because they're important. And remember, as a veteran, veteran services is very near and dear to my heart, but one of the issues with veteran services is, they're primarily working for the federal benefits, this is really a federal government responsibility, in my opinion, that they have shirked, and the counties have picked up to help veterans, the undeserving veterans that we want to try to help, but it's something that we do when we have the money. If we don't have the money, then maybe we ought to revisit, should we do that? They have a very active veteran support group, very active, perfect for a 501(c)(3), just like we did with Pets Alive on animal control, and I would like to work with them to try to provide those services that way. This is something we want to try to promote, it's just a question, can we afford it this year?
Everybody.
And volunteer fire departments, just so that, so that people understand, we give money to the volunteer fire departments because they do something that's really important for people discounting, and we're supportive of it, and we try to be supportive of it. I will tell you that over the last year, I have learned that they are very proud of their autonomy and independence, they like our money, but that's about it, if you want to know the truth. But the truth of the matter is that we have vehicles, there are political subdivisions of this state that can provide for those volunteer fire departments, and we have two of them that are already active. Ingram has Emergency Service District One, Mountain Home has ESD Two, and what these ESDs are, is they're political subdivisions of the state, they have taxing authority, they tax hardly anything, but they only tax the people in the service area that they service, the district. And I would encourage all the volunteer fire departments, let's help them get their ESDs. If we've got eleven volunteer fire departments, we ought to have eleven ESDs. If we've got 11 volunteer fire departments, we ought to have 11 ESDs. So whether we're working with nonprofits, 501(c)(3)'s, or whether we're working with an ESD for volunteer fire departments to try to meet these needs, let's do what we can. We want to promote these good works. We have to decide whether or not we can afford to fund them in our budget.
Is providing emergency medical service mandated requirement?
I don't think so. I don't think it is.
I don't think it is. We pay the city 1.2 million a year for that. That's, that's a service we, you know, I would argue, don't ever eliminate that. But if it's not mandatory, what you said is, let's eliminate it.
Well, we'll probably be able to get an opinion from our attorney on that. But that certainly is something that we have to debate. We have to discuss what it is that we can fund if it's not mandated.
Well, that's what.
I think it's a good start. Start with what's mandated and then what services we want to provide beyond that. I do, I would notice on your draft budget here, recommend, but you have 30% in reserve at the end.
That's not lost on me.
That's a lot of reserve. But anyway, we'll discuss.
We have a lot of uncertainty right there.
But that's more than's required. That's what you're saying.
Nothing's required.
25%.
Right.
25% is the guideline.
Guideline.
And for the public, when we talk about the fund balance, that is what you would call our bank account, our savings account. That's the monies that we have. And the state likes to have us have at least three months' worth of operating expenses in reserve if needed. And as we go through this COVID crisis and the economic destruction that we've experienced, I don't know how far we're going to have to tap into those savings.
What does all this do for contingency funding?
What do you mean?
That's a wide open question, but there's a lot, we may have a lot of surprises this year. We don't know.
That's what that reserve fund balance is for.
That's why you're putting the.
Yes.
Make that clear.
We don't know what's going to happen.
There's restrictions on the reserve too, right, Jim? Right, so you can't use it for just everything.
Right.
Can't use it for contingency per se.
Well, we have a contingency fund.
Yeah, that's different than.
That's what I'm saying, that what does this do to contingency? How does that?
We tried to leave as much as we could the same way it was last year. That answers your question.
Same amount as last year. Okay.
Sheriff?
Wait, 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 wait. And how much of that did we use today for this year? Contingency. So then that could be changed, perhaps? And not have the 30%. We're not done yet, but $2,000 topic isn't on.
I think I would recommend, Judge, and auditor, when we're doing our, our first couple of workshops, that we focus on things like our longevity policy. Our policy on how we account for the payroll fund. There's a different way to do it. Our policy with road and bridge relating to what this court wants to go on a road maintenance program. How, you know, basically how we're at a, trying to get every road redone every seven years. I think the number was seven to 10 years, something like that. Some of those big policies, I think we need to address early on, frequently have pensive to those late. And I think that, because those are, those three items almost determine the road fund, but, you know.
Big ticket items.
Big ticket items.
Sheriff.
Your budget does not propose not being able to fulfill our field already open positions.
Didn't touch that at all.
Okay. And the only other thing with longevity, and in a lot of ways, I agree with you, Judge, especially when you get higher on the salary chain. But when you look at that, we're going to have to look at starting salaries if you change that. Because what I've seen in the last, actually almost 20 years, I think, that's what, that longevity is what keeps our employees. Because our starting salaries are lower, they have a whole lot of age. But it's that longevity that gets you caught up in where you're going to make more, you know, by the end of the 20-year, okay? Makes it worth it. So if you change that longevity, you've got to raise that starting or we're going to lose employees right now. Because they just don't.
I agree. I mean, I'm not saying we get rid of it. I assume we need to look at it and modify it possibly.
And by the way, I've heard that for many years. Is that borne out? Do you know that to be true?
Yes.
You've lost employees?
Yes, I've lost, yeah.
Based on that, what you just described?
Based on that. And I've kept them once we really explained it and said, oh, this is where you would be, you know? And then other ones, a lot of the younger ones think of today, okay? Yeah, this is my salary right now. I'm going to go quick and go over there because I'm making more. And then they don't realize that, hey, that longevity, you know, six years, you'll be making a whole lot more here, okay? If you stay in the benefit. And that's where it's hard to weigh out. But yes, it will affect us drastically. Especially with me, with, with one of our biggest competitors, to be honest, is Kendall County. Because Kendall County's got the funds, always has, and their starting salary is a whole lot higher than ours. And that's where I'll lose them in a heartbeat.
And we get revenue from them too for keeping their prisoners, so don't forget that.
I lose a blood loss employee to them just a couple of weeks ago.
I have a question, the auditor's office. On average, the employee loss not replacing their employees, what does that bring to the county or save the county?
I don't know about, you can argue whether it's a savings or not, because I used to say that and I'd get in trouble because you got. So when we looked at last year's budget, it was about half of what the overage or what we ended up, the difference between the budget and where we ended up, about half of it could have been attributed to salaries.
Unfilled positions.
Unfilled positions, thank you.
And for the public, sometimes it takes us a month or two to fill a position. And we budgeted for a salary for those two months that we don't spend. And so that's what we're talking about here. And it's difficult for us to predict and project what's really going to be.
And it runs across all departments?
Yes.
And I can tell you for sheriff's office, even once we get an application turned in, it could still be two months before you actually have hired that person. So it's not just how long the opening was before, it's how long does it take to get through the hiring process with all the interviews, physical backgrounds, everything, expecting them all.
But 100% of that salary is in the budget, folks. That's what you need to understand.
And some of that, just to, two points. The first one is sometimes you've got to look at what their accrued vacation is also that has to be paid out. Because if someone has a whole lot of that, you're still using those same funds. And the second point is, we still are hoping to get the salary study in. And so that's going to hopefully take care of some of the longevity issues that we're talking about. We're hoping that that study is going to help us with starting salaries, with the longevity pay, all of that.
The other thing was a policy change this county did last year. That has affected my department drastically. Where we can quit building up comp time, so to speak, and you started paying it out as the overtime. You have to understand, part of what came out of that overtime or into that comp time was our holidays, okay? This county gives anywhere from 11 to 13 holidays where, you know, all before, 116 employees, a guy is going his comp. Or, well, not 116 because the clerical only worked Monday through Friday. But everybody else that's working shift, it was comp. Now it's being paid, okay? So my overtime, and I don't know what it actually is, I've been paying that out of the, out of the unfilled positions, okay? But in reality, where I had budgeted like, you know, 40 or 50,000 for overtime, we're at 110, 120,000 because of what we spent. So you have to really look at where that is. Because that one policy change up my overtime budget by well over $100,000 that was not budgeted.
And that goes to the point. At times, are you better off, are you helping by not hiring more people? Because if you, if you got to get the work done, you got to start paying comp time.
That's right.
You're paying time and a half or more. So all of a sudden, you're paying more out by not hiring somebody. So you got to really look at it, especially in law enforcement.
Yeah, not every department, but.
It's a complicated exercise, but it's good to go through it.
Where your salary's normally $20 an hour, you're paying overtime, you're looking at, you know, $35 or $40 an hour.
Right.
So is that something the auditor's office can look at and compare those?
Sure.
With help from HR.
That would be really good.
Well, it's going to be a daunting task, but I'm excited about getting it started. So we'll look forward to the progress we're making in the budget. We need to complete the approval in the information docket before we go into executive session.
Judge, do you mind calling the item that I had in 4.1 because it's not really appropriate for executive session?
Oh, sure.
Any longer?
We'll go ahead and call item 4.1A, which is an update regarding pending litigation. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This was just, I was going to update the court that, something that Commissioner Moser talked about at the beginning of the meeting, that tax assessor, Bob Reeves, has been sued in the 216th Judicial District by the Precinct 2 Prosperity Group, where they're asking the judge to, to have him accept electronic signatures for a local option liquor election. I just want to let the court know that that's happening. I'll represent, my office will represent. Bob, as the Elections Administrator, TAC, has been forwarded the petition because they have, there will be lots of lawsuits for counties related to COVID-19 issues and probably particularly election issues. And they're having conversations about it because there's, it wouldn't be in the policy now, but they're talking about including particular types of things for counties who do get, and elected officials who do get sued because of COVID-19 related issues.
And I think it's good that the public understand that this is a declaratory judgment action. This is not, there's no personal complaint about Mr. Reeves. This is, this is a legal technicality that he is the person in charge of the voting. And as such, he is the proper person to bring to court to see if the court can grant these digital signature waivers.
And the request is to change the election law.
And I just want the public to know, nobody's mad with tax assessor clerk.
Now, that won't be decided here, changing the election law, will it?
That's what they're asking the judge to do.
But that will go to Ohio Court.
No, no, what this, let me explain what this is. This is a declaratory judgment, and that means to declare the rights and obligations of the parties. The law presently requires that there has to be in-person witnessing and signing for this petition. Because of the crisis, this lawsuit is requesting that that personal part of that, the actual hand signature in front of somebody, be waived and that they be allowed to sign using a digital signature and with verification process. That lawsuit is pending in the 198th, I believe.
No, sorry.
216th. In the 216th. And.
So it'll be decided here.
And that's, Judge Patel, that'd be one of the first things he just decided.
Well, just to answer your question, it's also requested at the higher level by Andy Murray to the governor to waive the law, okay, his executive order saying electronic signatures are accepted. So there's two-pronged approach. One's at the lower level, 216th, the other was at the governor level.
This lawsuit's just for precinct 2.
Right.
Anything in Austin is for the state.
Judge, but if regardless of how the 216th rules, it could be appealed, correct?
Yes, it could.
So it could go to someplace else.
So it could go to Supreme Court.
Well, there's been no indication that there's that kind of opposition to this, so we'll see.
Maybe you'll finally get that petition.
It's a good possibility. Okay, let's go back to the approval docket.
That just leads to other things.
Item 2.1, pay the bills. Ms. Elton.
Invoices for this week, per county, $325,261.86. The airport, $540.93. Adult probation, $2,776.57. Juvenile probation, $16,948. District clerk fees, $1,000. 216th DA forfeiture funds, $7,709. And county clerk fees, $157.38.
Move we pay the bills is submitted by the county attorney.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser and seconded by Commissioner Letts to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, 5-0. Budget amendments?
There are not any.
Late bills?
There are not any.
And no auditor reports, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. 2.5, monthly reports.
All right. For March 2020, standard monthly report from Constable Precinct 3, Ken Wilkie. Human Resources Indigenous Services Director, Jennifer Doss. For April 2020, payroll approval, month ending April 2020. County Treasurer, Tracy Solban. Standard monthly reports from Constable Precinct 1, Tommy Rodriguez. Constable Precinct 2, Kyle Snyder. Constable Precinct 3, Ken Wilkie. Funds judgments and jury fees collected for, J.D. 2, J.R. Foam. District Clerk, Dawn Lance. County Clerk, Jackie J. Doughty. And Environmental Health, O.S.S.F., monthly activity report, Director, Ashley Batters. I move for approval.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Bellood to approve the monthly reports as reported. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, 5-0. Court orders, 2.6.
Yes, we have the court orders from our May 4 meeting. Court orders 38069 to 38074. All being ordered, move for approval.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Bellood to approve the court orders as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, 5-0. Information agenda, 3.1, status reports from department heads.
I actually thought I was done with the.
This Shane Evans?
Yep, Shane Evans, the maintenance director. I thought I was done with making the COVID shields for all these offices. I've been approached by the adult probation to make 11 more shields for their office areas. And then also the district courts for their, for the judge, witness stands, and some of the other courtrooms to make COVID shields for their offices as well. So I'll start on those as soon as I can get the electric glass to do it, I guess.
Thank you. Any other department head reports? 3.2, elected official reports. Sheriff?
Just so you know real quick, jail population currently, we still have 147 people. It has dropped off drastically. Once the courts open up, I'm sure that you will see our population skyrocket because of a lot of cases that are just being filed at large right now and things like that, especially some of your drug cases and that. We are still housing 30 out-of-county inmates. We haven't been taking any in since all this started, but we also didn't intentionally send any back. We left, you know, they could keep what they had. I have been advised that Hector County, who's one of the big ones, has been able to open up their facility that they were remodeling. So their count's probably going to drop off and we won't be housing inmates for them. We do have another county, I think Lubbock, has asked if they could house here once it all starts. But we also have inmates scattered all over the state that we still need to bring back here in trying to keep it, you know, out of our facility. And with the governor's executive orders, he waived it. Normally you have 10 days to get them once they're ready. He waived that. We haven't been able to. And I know we have one right now that's in another county, that that cell population that he's in does have it. It's being tested for it. So I'm glad we're not bringing in the county attorney and district attorneys are all very, helping us a lot in either changing some of these issues so we don't have to bring them back. But there are a number of arrests still happening every day. It's not, you know, the jail's not shut down. We are, officers are still making stops. And unfortunately, when we do, you know, things happen there too. And we've had to have just, I think, four officers tested in the last week just because of stops they made and that. And, you know, one of the going things right now, every time you stop somebody, is they're going to holler that they are, you know, active COVID so that they can keep from either paying tickets or going to jail or whatever. or going to jail or whatever. And it's just not working, but it's one of the repercussions we're having to deal with through all this.
People are using it as a literal-
Unfortunately, they're using it as an excuse, which is to me, one of the sorryest things they can do, because you're jeopardizing officers that are putting their lives on the line already, and then you're threatening them with something like that, which, you know, I wish we had a separate jail, we could stick every one of those kind of people in. But it's a shame. But other than that, it's still staying busy. In a lot of ways, more busy. Domestic violence calls go up, everything else go up.
Are there additional charges you're filing, somebody lying to a law officer?
I file every time somebody lied to me. Heather could never prosecute.
If word got out that that adds a charge to your offense, it might help a little bit.
Yeah. It's not doing them any good too, I can promise you.
Well, I hear you there.
Well, Sheriff, let me say that we're proud of the way you run the jail.
Well, no, you know, we've got some very dedicated employees out there that are coming to work in this atmosphere, day in, day out, and they're doing a remarkable job. That's all I've got to say. I think they deserve a lot, once this is all over. But I think our entire community does. I think we've done well.
We have. We really have. But let's not get complacent. Okay, 3.3, liaison commissioner reports. Anything?
I can tell you, the historical society's, the commission's not gonna meet for one of them. They keep putting it off, putting it off, putting it off. Their summer camp is off.
At least they're not hysterical society.
They are now. Oh, they're that close.
Couple of things for public session on KDC. There's a new board member, which will represent the, from Chamber of Commerce, Rachel London, is the new member with Walt Keeney having left. And the budget that they're gonna submit is gonna be less than last year because of some other changes associated with their relationship with Chamber of Commerce. So, and then there's some other things in executive session on KDC that Jonathan and I can report on.
Their budget of course was 37.5?
Yeah, something like that.
37.5, so, down from-
50.
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll submit it.
We're getting ready to break to go into executive session, and I want the public to understand that what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and we're gonna allow our IT people to turn off the video and turn off the sound, because those are not public. And so, and then when we come out of executive session, if we have any business, we'll take a recess, so IT can set back up to resume the videotape on YouTube and get the sound back.
Judge, if I may, let me mention one other liaison thing on veteran service officer. We talked about it, that the agenda item was a report on the operations on the Memorial Day service. That's a two-month activity in which they plan to do that in light of COVID. It looked like it was not gonna be possible to get all the color guards and everything like that. So, they'll report on it, to come back at the next session with a recommendation. If that's appropriate, if we have a Memorial Day service, it'd be greatly reduced in scope, maybe just a speaker, and that's it with the gathering, but it won't have all the other wreaths and everything else associated, like we normally do. So, anyway, just a heads up on it.
Well, everything's modified because of the public.
Right.
Okay, so with that, we're going to take, we're going to go and take a recess. I'm gonna bang the gavel, and YouTube process will stop, and then we'll resume when we come out of executive session. We'll take a five-minute break. Okay, it is 12:21. May the 11th, 2020, and the court's coming out of executive session, back into open session. And item 4.2, personnel matters, as per section 551.074 of the Government Code. Agenda item is 4.2A, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding veteran services, office staffing. Commissioner Moser?
Thank you, Judge. I make a motion that during the absence of the veteran service officer, that the, for an extended period, that the deputy veteran service officer, which is a part-time employee, be become full-time through the, at least through the end of this fiscal year.
Second.
I didn't even miss you. Apologies. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go home.
So, motion's been made by Commissioner Moser to hire Jennifer Sanchez as a full-time replacement for Marty during his military service.
I second it.
And seconded by Commissioner Baloo. Any further discussion?
Is there an effective date on that?
No.
No, no.
No, just her absence through the, at least through the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. There is, and it will be communicated to HR, but we can't talk about it here. So, I would point out to the public that this is gonna net, have a net savings to us of about $7,300. So, this is financially prudent for us to do.
Thank you. Very good point.
Yes. So, with that, any further debate? If not, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0. Is there any other business before the court today? There not being any, we are adjourned.